Welcome to the October 28, 2014, regular meeting of the Ojai City Council, Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency. Role call?
Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Clapp. Councilmember Lara.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Strobel.
Present. And Mayor Pro Tem Smith, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Follow me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a quick reminder, any speakers or any persons in the audience who would like to address an item that's on the agenda, please turn in a speaker card. And anyone who'd like to address an unscheduled item, please turn in a speaker card. We have no presentations, and so this is the time for public communications. I'm not sure what kind of order we have here, but I'll just take them as I have them here. Remember to limit your comments to three minutes. Address your comments to the council. David Mason.
David Mason, El Paso Road. Well, it's been brought to my attention that there may be some construction or demolition on the property at 1105 North Signal. The house was built for Mr. and Mrs. Dixon Kelly. Mrs. Kelly being the heir to the Jurgens lotion and a big supporter of all Ojai causes. It was constructed by the firm of D.E. Coleman, who was one of the Valley's leading contractors. He built most of the homes in the Arvelada. The architect for the house, that is often referred to in various publications as mid-century modern landmark with timeless quality, was the popular Fred Hummel, Jr. Mr. Hummel, a native of Ojai, graduated from Nordoff in 1945. He served in the United States Army from '45 to '52. Served on the grand jury in Ventura, was a member of the Ventura City Planning Commission and City Redevelopment Commission. His architectural work brought him an American Institute of Architects Fellowship Award. And from there, he became president of the AIA, Chapter for Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties, where he received the Distinguished Service Citation Award. He also received an award for the best new building in America, for his design of the Del Mar Racetrack. Through his awards and popularity, he came to the attention of Governor Ronald Reagan, who chose him as the official state architect. He held this position through four different governors. During his time, he designed the San Francisco Civic Center, State Office Buildings, and the Supreme Court Building. Also during this term, he designed over 300 state facilities each year. And he created the California Seizmic retrofit program and was in charge of numerous historic restoration programs. He won an award of honor for the design of the California State University's library at Chico. The California State University at Sacramento Award was for unique and lasting contributions to the master planning process for the state's university and colleges. While in Sacramento, Mr. Hummel also led the fight to reserve the State Capitol Building and restore it. The crowning glory was being chosen to design the beautiful Ronald Reagan Library in Simi Valley. And I might add that one other design, close to home for this important architect, was the design for the boat docks at Lake Casitas. In 2011, the city of Ojai spent many thousands of dollars to have prepared a historic resource survey. This property falls in category three, which states that because it could not be viewed from the public streets sufficiently to make a judgment, the property in that category requires a historic resource letter. The purpose of the letter is determine if the property could be reassigned to category one or two, or to determine if proposed alterations will have a potential significant impact on a historical resource. The main reason for this survey is to minimize the processing and decreasing the chance of permits being issued without the appropriate level of review. This data will also assist the city in complying with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and Section 10.6 of the National Historic Preservation Act. The reason this property was not included in the list of 37 potential landmarks was due to the fact that none of us felt that anyone would be foolish enough to destroy this Ojai landmark. Thanks.
Ryan Blatz.
I'd like to yield my time to Lucy Arango. Speak afterward.
Salam Joshua. Oh, you want to go ahead and come up?
Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Lucy Arango, and I am the person behind the much-talk-about project at 1105 North Signal Street. I am here, along with my architects, landscaper, and contractor, to explain our plans for the property and to hopefully dispel some misinformation. First of all, I am not new to the Ojai Valley. I first came to the Ojai Valley in 1980 as a freshman at Thatcher. My children and I are graduates of the Ojai Valley School. I served on the board of the Ojai Valley School from the mid-1990s to the mid-2000s, while at the same time, funding and running an inclusive school for children with learning disabilities. I have also served on the board of Pomona College. Since coming back to live in the Valley in 2006, I have helped the Ojai--
Can I follow down both of you now?
Sure. I have helped the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy acquire more than 100 acres of land, including the Valley View Preserve and the Hatton Property. I am a deeply private person. My donations have been anonymous. The Ojai Valley Land Conservancy was gracious enough to name Lucy's Trail after me. I bring all this up because I have been accused of cutting down oak trees. My profile as an educator and conservationist is not in keeping with someone that would cut down oak trees. One of the reasons we bought the property was because of the beautiful oak trees. We designed the house to center around the main oaks. I hired and trusted professionals to do much of the needed cleanup work on the property. If any violations occurred, I certainly would like to correct that. We have planted two oak trees and plan to plant many more. I did hire professional licensed companies to take down eucalyptus and olive trees. Again, if any violations occurred, I would be happy to work with the city in correcting this. The landscape plan to be presented tonight shows, as of now, 223 new trees to be planted. We have been scrutinized and inspected prior more than any other property in Ojai. Our neighbors have been kind enough to call the city on us, at least on a weekly basis, if not daily. Again, if any violations exist, I will work with the city to correct this. It is my understanding that many people do not like the wall that went up on our sideyard. While I'm a firm supporter of public land, I am also a firm supporter of private property rights. The two need to cohabitate in harmony in order for society to work. We are working on beautifying the wall by planting ivy, and we also have set up doggy poop and water stations that we will maintain. Our plan is to beautify the area as much as possible. Another issue brought up has been the Schumacher issue. We would like to inform everyone that the city has an archaeological report on file, which we have been asked to update and are in the process of doing so. We have an archaeologist working on site, and we also have a Schumacher representative to be on site for any digging. If we have offended anyone, it has not been out of malice or intent. As a historian and a Hispanic woman, I am very sensitive to historical and minority issues. Going forward, we will continue working with the archaeologists and the Schumacher on issues with the property. The other rumor I want to dispel is that we're opening some sort of commercial resort. Nothing could be further from the truth. I am an active rock climber and mountaineer. I want to build a dream home in which I can stay healthy enough to pursue my dreams of climbing mountains and seeing the beauty the world has to offer. One thing I think we could all agree on is that when it comes to aesthetics, it is difficult to come to an agreement. That is why a permitting process exists. I want to work with the city to find solutions that are reasonable and fair to anything that has been done on the property. We have been speaking with city planners for over a year and a half about this project. I request that the city continues to apply the laws justly, equally, fairly, and without capriciousness to this project. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and everybody in the room. The general plan says one thing, and the project at 1105 North Signal says another.
Salam, can you give us your address?
Oh, sure. 1205 North Signal. The North Signal neighborhood, the neighborhood itself, not talking about the people essentially, says one thing, and 1105 North Signal says something else. Anyone who hasn't been up to see the development that has gone on so far, it would be informative to go up and look. Decide for yourself. Many of us in this room know how this development began. The ball was dropped by City Hall. This project needed to go to a planning hearing. It didn't. The public had no input to it. I doubt that anyone in the public knew about it. I doubt that many, if any, on the council knew about it. There should be an audit of how this kind of process, or lack of process, happens within our city's government. This is not a small item we're talking about. Even if the exemption given to this property, meaning that it could just begin, is described as a single residence, just go out and look. This is not your average single residence. I don't know of another residence that has tennis courts and a huge square cubed building, which is very much in the view sight of its nearest neighbor. These are things that are upsetting when we consider how Ojai values things that are natural. It doesn't feel natural, and that's the bottom line. If it doesn't feel right, something probably isn't right. And it is important that we learn from how this happened in the first place. I want to add that Kathy Wald inherited this project. Most of us know that. It isn't a project that she originally had any hand on, but there were people who did have their hands on it, and they let it go without the public even having a chance to say a word. Thank you.
Maria Ventura.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, and city staff. My name is Maria Ventura. I'm the new Public Affairs Manager with SoCal Gas, and I just wanted to come tonight and introduce myself. I'm here to work with everybody here. If I give everybody a resource, information with Natural Gas, SoCal, please reach out to me. I've left my business cards, and again, I'm thrilled to be here tonight and looking forward to working with everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilpeople. The first thing I want to say is that I'm not speaking formally as Chair of the Arts Commission tonight, but a lot of what I'm going to say has overlapped into the area of public art. So I really want to talk about three things, and if I had a topic or a heading for all this, it might be that it's time for a little civil disobedience. So on Ojai Day, I attended an art opening over at Mark Whitman's studio on Topa Topa, and around nightfall, I decided to walk back to where I'd parked my car. And my heart stopped when I saw several men dressed in uniforms with hoses, hosing the chalk mandala out of the middle of the street on Signal and Ojai Avenue. And I thought to myself, oh, why didn't they leave it? Because I have memories of it fading away. So why, when we're having a drought, are we using water to wash off this fantastic, magical piece of artwork in a city that draws people here for art? A lot of people feel the way I do, and I'm wondering if when temporary art is installed, if some conversation could be had with the Arts Commission. So here's where I'm kind of putting that hat on a little bit. Perhaps we can work something out so that it can stay up a little longer. But then, already with a broken heart, I realized that the yarn bomb had been taken down all along that incredible walk. And for those of you that were here for Ojai Day and had the pleasure of walking under it, you know that it was a little piece of very special Ojai magic. But it was ripped down, apparently by vandals or by city workers. There's two stories out there. I don't know which is true. But once again, here is an installation, a temporary public art installation, that was just gotten rid of, and I wish the Arts Commission could somehow be involved in this process. I understand that the yarn makers were told it would be up through Ojai Day, but gee, it would have been great to extend that as long as possible. The last thing has to do with the turning off of the fountains all around town, and I really am going to take that hat off, because I want to talk about why we cannot run fountains that are recycling water. My understanding is that we're able to do that, and we are taking water away from wildlife. We're taking water away from bees. We're taking water away from birds, squirrels, and other animals, so that we can have it for ourselves. Madam Mayor, turn on those fountains. Thank you.
Mayor, real quickly. I know the history behind the--
I know the history behind--
I'm not first, folks.
Well, I would like to look into the fountains. I think that's a very valid point. Animals don't have water right now, so I would like to look into that. But I know the history behind the Caltrans mandala. Caltrans said that it was distracting and dangerous. And it's a state highway, so they insisted that we remove it. So it's a Caltrans issue, and whether we want to tackle that or not, I don't know. But just to let you know, that's why that happened. I don't really think about the R-bomb thing.
Amy Matheson.
Good evening, everyone. As a longtime resident of the Ojai Valley, I have noticed threats on many levels to our unique quality of life.
I can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
Put it a little higher.
Higher, like that? I've noticed threats on many levels to our unique quality of life. I believe our goal should be to preserve its small-town atmosphere. This definitely should include protection of all old-growth trees. Ojai's Tree Protection Ordinance 738 recognizes oaks, sycamore, heritage, and other mature trees as having significant historical, aesthetic, ecological importance. I would like to expand that ordinance to include olives, pepper, eucalyptus, hawke ronda, and more. Mature trees remove 70 times more pollution than a newly planted tree. Trees provide shade and wind buffering. Average tree life expectancy in an urban area is eight years. A single tree provides 260 pounds of oxygen per year. A single tree can have a value of up to $10,000. Currently, there is little or no oversight over what is cut down, especially on weekends and holidays. Can the trees on property being transferred to new owners be mapped and listed before work begins? There are few permits issued, and many trees are gone. New trees cannot replace the old. Self-serving possibilities abound when a trimmer obtains a permit and demolishes the trees. 738 is a virtually unenforceable code without consequences. This code needs to be fixed now, before we lose all of our trees. In my opinion, it would be efficient to make the contractors monetarily responsible for tree loss, as they are being paid to do their job correctly and ethically.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Was that PC1 or PC2, that card?
I gave her one card.
Oh, okay.
One card for public comment.
I'm going to, it sounds like I'm trying to cover three or four topics here in three minutes.
That's okay.
Okay.
You've got three minutes to do it.
First of all, thank you for adding some words of explanation in the agenda about the text amendment TA 1403. Now at least people entering the meeting and picking up an agenda here in the foyer have a general idea of what that's about. If there is another reading of that proposed text amendment, would you consider adding a sentence explaining what the proposed change is? Thank you for that. Also, I would ask if you could consider item five, the well moratorium, before item two, the permits for two wells, as passing item five could make item two moot. And third, I've read Mr. McClary's response on the E.J. Harrison business. I have to say, in my 40 years of aerospace and communications business, I've never gotten a piece of business that I didn't compete for, and I'm still a little bit surprised that we don't have any competition for the solid waste management. Fourth, I'd like to talk briefly about Ordinance 811. I've requested an appointment with Ms. Wald, and so I'm just going to hit a couple of things that I think will probably not be covered in that conversation. Since the first candidate forum, and I'm a candidate for council, as you all know, when I talked about the bowling alley that is an eyesore that produces no city jobs, vacant buildings have become an increasingly popular topic of conversation. I would like to know, and I asked Mr. Fletcher already about one of these pieces, but Section 915 dot 11C says this is about vacant buildings. Fencing shall be permitted, but only with the consent of and under the direction of the director, that would be Ms. Wald. And no chain link or plastic fencing shall be permitted. So is the chain link fencing around the bowling alley just grandfathered, or is there some other provision in the code of which I am not aware? Finally, Section 9 dash 15 dot 14 says the fee for registering a vacant property shall be set by resolution of the city council. As I look at the fee schedule, I can see a fee, $307, I think it is, for annual monitoring, but I see nothing for registering a vacant property. And I'd like to know if there is in fact such a fee that has been established by resolution of the city council, and if not, why not? Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Patty Sprague. I am the new region manager in Public Affairs for Southern California Edison. I've had the pleasure of meeting with many of you already, and those that I haven't, I just want to let you know I look forward to working with you in the future. I've had the pleasure of touring some of your projects with Greg Grant. Thank you for assigning him to me. I learned a lot about issues that are facing your city and ways that we can work together. So I'm really excited to be representing Ojai for Edison, and if you have any questions or need me for anything, please feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Good seeing you again.
You too.
Hi. I'm the cultural monitor for the top of Signal Street. I've been up there, and there's just a couple of things I want to say. I do not have a personal axe to grind with the people that build there. I do believe in building rights and property rights. I think that's breaking a bigger law than everything else that has been talked about. Unfortunately, that's just my opinion. But that being said, I also wanted to say that we're doing everything that needs to be done. They've been nothing but proactive with us and helping us and cooperative. Everything's being done. If things get said about our culture not by us, then that's somebody else's personal axe to grind using our names. We're not too stupid to figure it out on our own. So if it does not come from me, or my family, or somebody connected to us, I would discredit that big time, because that's offensive. That's just a personal agenda. It has nothing to do with us. So if you have any questions, direct them towards us. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. I'm Heather McFarland. I'm the archaeologist for the 1105 Signal property. Normally, when a property comes up and there's going to be construction, a letter is asked for from the Southern Calif-- Southern, I'm sorry, South Central Coast Information Center for a quick check, and that quick check would have shown that there was a previously documented site on the property and that probably a Phase 1 would have been required. At this point, the site is an old site. It was documented in 1961 by Thomas Blackburn, who was then head of UCLA Anthropology Department. And unfortunately, by 1963, due to construction of the houses currently on the property, that site was listed as destroyed. In 2005, two areas were separated from, lot split from, that main site, main property. And archaeological testing on that property proved that the material that had been on that property of the lot splits was not significant. No testing has been done on the actual original site. Assumably, it has been pushed into other areas on the property. It was a 100 by 200-foot site. It was three feet deep, and it was a very rich deposit. In walking around the site and doing a simple survey, we found broken monos, which are grinding stones that they use on a matate to process seeds for eating, and we found some broken pestles, which are used with mortars, and they grind acorns. The first matates and monos are used during the early period, and the second during the middle period. And the site apparently had been a permanent campsite that people returned to every year. There are some matates still left on the property. It appears that they've all been pushed off the top of the hill, so there's going to be areas where material may still exist, but we're expecting it probably to be disturbed. But there's always a chance that in pushing the material off the site, we might find some intact deposit. So we're going to be doing what's called an extended Phase 1, where I'm going to go out there with Michael Imwali, who is archaeologist for the Trust for Historic Preservation in Santa Barbara. And we're going to look at the site. We're going to do long trenches and see if there is any intact material, or if it is indeed all disturbed. We're also going to be mapping any artifacts on the surface, and those artifacts will be curated with the Ojai Museum as part of the project. So the extended Phase 1 will tell us whether or not there are areas of the site that will need Phase 2 testing. And Phase 2 testing will determine whether or not the material that remains is significant under CEQA. Until we know that for sure, there's really nothing that can be said about it, other than we are working on it. And the contractor has been just totally responsive to our needs in changing certain equipment, so there's not as much damage to the subsurface area, and in working with us to monitor and look after the resource and determine whether or not any of it needs to undergo Phase 2 testing.
Thank you. Thank you. Peter Allen? And I probably mutilated that.
Not the first time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Pete Aylin. I'm the architect for the project eleven oh five North Signal. And just wanted to say that we wanted to give you guys some information on the project. A lot of rumors out there, just so you can see what we're actually doing. The last couple of pages in that package list some statistics. You know, the first one compares the house that's there right now. And then the second is the house that was giving its zoning clearance and the director's exemption, the previous design. That house was much larger than our house and much taller. And then finally, we have stats on our project. So you can compare the three, just so you have that information. There's also a sheet in there, the last, second or last sheet, that discusses the density of the neighborhood and how we fit into that. So that's just more, you know, information for you. I have done work in Ojai before. This is not my first time here and have won an award here in town for work we've done. Adrian Coulter here, who's my lead architect on the project and the project designer. She worked for David Berry here in Ojai for fifteen years and was his right-hand person. So just to be assured that we're, we're sensitive to this area. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm having difficulty with the first name, but last name's Coulter. And it's A, A.D.
Adrian?
Thank you.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Nice handwriting, though.
Oh, thank you. I am an architect. We're supposed to do that. It's just a party trick. My name is Adrian Coulter. I'm one of the architects working with Peter Aylin and Lucy to create a new home. I'm speaking today to dispel any possible illusions that she has brought in out-of-town professionals with no understanding or respect for the sensibility of Ojai's traditions. Both Peter Aylin and I have worked in Ojai before. I myself was privileged to work for fifteen years with David Berry. He was a former mayor and city council member, as you may remember, until he passed away. During those years, I helped him with the renovation of Libby Bowl, the return of the pergola to the entrance of Libby Park, and the restoration of the Mission Revival style facade to the Oaks. We worked on creating the spa at the Ojai Valley Inn, as well as other facilities that helped make its reputation as one of the country's most beautiful resorts. Together, we created residences here for our clients in a wide variety of styles. Styles that spoke to their hearts, that made them feel at home in their own homes. As architects, we all hope that someday our projects will be on lists of fabulous homes in this area. But our greatest concern is to give Lucy the beautiful, the beautiful home that she really wishes to have. Beautiful from the inside and the outside in a project that enhances her neighborhood and the town that she calls home. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn Treading?
Dawn Treading, North Signal Street. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. Firstly, I would like to extend my thanks to the public for coming forward and presenting further information on this important matter at one one oh five. To the council members, I say that you have done amazing things. Ojai is free of light pollution, plastic bags, and smart meters. Yet walls and structures are being erected, depriving the community of its small-town character. Two weeks has elapsed since I stood before you, and I again ask, what is going on at one one oh five North Signal Street? The city says that a planned development complied with city code and a director's exemption was given, thereby exempting the project from further review. Yet I ask, where does Ojai's municipal code grant the director authority to issue exemption from design review for a project of this scope and magnitude? Where is compliance with property development standards to ensure walls maximize scenic views and sunlight and are attractively designed? Where is compliance with the stated purpose of the zoning regulations themselves? To preserve and enhance the aesthetic quality of the city and to preserve and enhance significant environmental resources? Where is the compliance with zoning regulation that requires, quote, "all development within the city to be consistent with the general plan"? A plan that includes conservation of natural resources as well as potential cultural resources and historic buildings? And why is there no municipal code that protects cultural resources? And where is the city's environmental review procedures aside from CEQA? And why is this all so confusing? Why does a wall not need a permit one day and the next day it does? How does a director's exemption become a zoning clearance? Where is the public transparency in all this, and why can't the public figure out what's going on? Why are reports being supplied by the applicant to settle issues in question when it's just good policy to maintain an arms-length relationship from the applicant? Ojai is known for its history and its heritage. A two thousand and nine National Trust for Historic Preservation article points to our town's preservation efforts. Yet a historic building has been approved for demolition and cultural resources were placed at risk. Please stand up for the greater good of Ojai. I urge you to do what's right. I ask you to make this an agenda item for the next meeting and answer these questions publicly so that the city's response can be a matter of public record as these questions need to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Hendersport? And that's the best I could do.
My writing. It's Paul Hendershot. I'm with the Signal Group also. I'm the landscape designer. I'm with the Signal Group as well. I'm the landscape designer. Just listening to everyone, you know, things have to go. A wall goes up. Until it's finished, it's not beautiful. That's going to be a beautiful stucco wall, just like we have in front of the Oaks, just like we have at the Chamber of Commerce. It's going to be filled with Boston ivy. We're planting two hundred something trees on the property. You can't judge this property while you're just watching the beginning. And everyone's, you're not, if you want to see the end, I will give you all the plans that we have for the landscape. But it's in complete reverence with Ojai. There's no... I'm just so surprised to even hear the things that I've heard. The, the wall is going to be beautiful. It's a stucco wall. They're all over the place. Is that a new thing? It's only six feet tall. They're all over the place. And we're planting hundreds of trees. I forgot to remind you. I think it's two hundred thirty trees. It's really going to be just a beautiful forest. So I hope that it continues because I think it's going to be a great addition to Signal Street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Katrina McFadden?
Good evening, again. I just want to support, again, the aesthetics of the wall being taken care of, taking the wall leveled down. I want to just be firm about that. Last, two weeks ago, after we spoke, I saw a lot of digging going on and making the wall look a little less high. I'm sorry. My name is Katrina McLaughlin. I live on North Signal Street. Thank you. I'm nervous because I don't want to actually do this every Tuesday night. I'd rather watch The Voice, and I'd really like to actually bring Lucy some cookies. But there's just a couple of things that are bothering me about the wall, and the height is just too high. We can't see anything but wall. It begs for graffiti. We've lost our mountain views. We've been walking up there for years. It diminishes the value of our home. It diminishes the value of our landscape and the people that have been coming here for years. And it also seems to be a bit of a retaining wall. Right there is a ditch where the tree is. There's a lot of floodwaters that have happened in the past, and that water goes, trails right by that wall, and then comes flooding down North Signal Street. I have a structure behind my home that was not there before that also was built over sort of a flood flow, and now, just on the last rain, last year, the very small amount of rain we had, we had flood because the grates that were put in were clogged because of all the stuff coming down. I just, I just want to make sure that the wall's back five feet, the wall's at the right height, and that we get some of the codes and permits that we already got in place kept in place. That's it. And I want, I want her to have a beautiful home. I want her to have a nice neighbor, friendly neighborhood situation. But the wall was very concerning and abrupt and in our face, and we felt abused by that not being heard from the get-go. So we really feel like we need to do something about the wall. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have for unscheduled. And I'd like to remind everyone...
May I have one, I have one last comment for public speaking? I traded.
He turned, he turned one in.
I tried to say I was switching.
You may, you may have a, a comment, but I get one first.
Yes.
And that is, this is unscheduled. I truly hope council members do not try to address these issues. This has never been before the council. I would, when the speakers are finished, like Mr. Clark, to give us an idea of what the applicant's options might be if they are in disagreement with either a staff decision or planning commission decision or whatever. But I really appreciated it not being discussed because it is not agendized.
No problem, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Blatz?
Thank you. Well, obviously, I am here to speak on the property going up at eleven oh five North Signal. And I'd first like to say that I thank the, I always love and, and support community involvement in any of these issues, and I think it's important that we do have some dialogue about it because there are, there is a legitimate difference of opinion on this project that's going up right now. And I will say, I really respect Mr. Joshua and Mr. Mason and some of the things they said. And I do think that what Mr. Joshua said about there being an audit and maybe some potential changes to how this process works in the future is something that the council should address and look at, and that there may be some policy changes that are needed. However, this project has been deemed so far to be completely legal. And it's important that we remember that the laws that exist in our community, as far as community development and otherwise, are not subject to us liking them or not liking them. Just as much as I defend the right of free speech, whether I like what you're saying or not, this particular project, whether it's liked or not, has been deemed to be legal, and everything that's gone on so far has been legal. I want to attest to Ms. Arango's really aggressive wanting to make sure that she is doing everything right. You've heard a couple of speakers tonight speak about her cooperation and her level of involvement, how the contractors are willing to change the equipment being used, how they are trying to deal with the cultural issues that may be involved. There's no question that this is not a building that is trying to go up, cutting any corners or hiding anything. They've been absolutely above board with everything with the city, and they've been working their tail off to make sure that they were compliant with every single regulation that is on the books. I think it's important that we also say that we're not here trying to change what the council is doing at all. The council so far has been supportive of the project. I know that some people disagree with that, but I do think it's important that we're not demeaning or complaining about anything that's going on. We just hope that the council continues to look at this project in a manner of what is legal and what is not. And if there's changes that need to be made in the procedures that made this project move through, and there needs to be more oversight, then I'd be the first one to come up and speak about how that is the right process. But to punish Lucy for what she's been doing and everything she's worked on this project would be completely inappropriate. She is really working to do everything possible, including she's added, she's willing to add ivy on the wall, which aesthetically, the wall is going to change so completely, it's impossible to get a real idea of what that wall is going to look like at this point, given that the stucco and ivy isn't there yet. But additionally, they just installed doggy bags for excrement. They've installed, they're going to put in public water so that anyone that has an animal or for human consumption if needed, that they're going to be able to access water spigots that are out on that wall, because we know it's a heavily traveled wall. And there's a lot of dirt there. That wall isn't just there for aesthetic reasons. It's there for the large trucks that go by for the water, the water district that's there, as well as the number of people that walk by and the dirt that's caused, that's caused to, to build up and floats down onto the property quite a bit. Additionally, the project is going to end up being beautiful. They're literally installing over two hundred and twenty trees. I think I heard two thirty. It's somewhere between two twenty and two thirty. And trying to get an assessment of what this project is going to look like at its initial conception before it's been really built at all is unfair to judge it based on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ulrich, while you're on your way up, I, I think I misspoke or restricted something I said. And that is, I, I asked what the options of the applicant might be. But it's not just the applicant. The, the citizens who might be in opposition also have the right to challenge. So anyway, be thinking about that because I would like an answer. Mr. Ulrich?
William Ulrich, Gridley Road. And in the interest of transparency, I am a candidate for the Ojai School Board. I would urge the city council to create a liaison with the Ojai Unified School District. It's the largest employer in the city, and if Measure J passes, construction and facilities repairs will affect city streets. Local businesses will be affected, and contractors and vendors should have city business licenses where appropriate. Relative to liaisons, I would also suggest and urge the council to move council liaison reports to a spot ahead of public hearing, the, ahead of the public hearing segment in order that council liaison reports may be heard by all rather than as a closing item after a lengthy and sometimes late council discussion segment. Council liaison for the Ojai Valley Sanitation District, I believe that's the mayor pro tem, Smith, has not attended a sanitation district board meeting for at least four months. Perhaps another more interested council member should be tasked with this essential organization. Finally, I would like to express my support for an elected mayor. Vote yes on Measure A. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have for public comment. Anyone else wish to speak? And Mr. Clark, would you give us some information? Here we have quite an audience for eleven oh five North Signal.
Thank you. So as you've heard tonight and heard at the last meeting and have seen in your emails, there've been quite a number of issues that have been raised about this project. Each and every one of those issues is being reviewed by Ms. Wald and Mr. Fletcher to make sure that the proper procedures are being followed. So if there are people who have issues, they should let us know what those are, and we will review all those issues. That's in process, and so we don't have a, a report on the status of it at this time. The other thing I wanted to mention is that councils express concern about the director's exemption process. And so we are scheduling a discussion item in January about that process. And I would say that we agree that it's flawed in that there's no public notice and there's no appeal situation associated with the director's exemptions. So although that doesn't directly resolve any issues on this particular project, it's intended to prevent this kind of issue from happening again in the future.
Okay. One last thing. I'm glad that we're going to address the problem with the director's exemption, but I do want to make sure that if there are a group of citizens out there who take issue with the director's exemption, that they be aware that they have a path to take to appeal that exemption. And I don't want us looking at this in January to impair their right to appeal. I don't know the date that this was heard before the Planning Commission.
Was it? Never was.
Never heard.
Never heard.
It was a ministerial permit.
It was a director's exemption. It's never heard before.
Never.
Okay. Help us out there, Mr. Fletcher.
As a director's exemption-
You've got the drift here.
Yeah. There, well, it, it, there's a number of, you know, there's a lot of discussions about the question about the construction of the wall, and the larger discussion about the, the, what has been constructed to date, which I think is, is mainly this climbing wall building, and then what entitlements are involved with the new house. My involvement's mostly with the question, answering the question about the wall. And the important point is that, is that walls and fences under six feet high are permitted by right, are ministerial projects, not subject to any discretionary review in and of themselves as a, as a project. More often, they often come into play when, when a project is under design review, where the entire development is subject to review. And, and, but not necessarily. A homeowner can build a wall in their backyard or their side yard, you know, with, without any other entitlements. I'm not completely up to speed on the, on the schedule of the, of the house, house construction, other than, and so maybe, I don't know if Ms. Wald's here, you can answer that. So, but, but that's, that's, certain things were already approved as director's exemptions, and I think that's done. And in this case, constructed like the climbing wall building. We're resolving the question about the fence, the wall, and the question there is not how it gets entitled, but rather what the, the development standards. The issue of pure people discussion is the question of, of whether it can be built on the, on the, on the property line or whether it needs to be set back from the property line being a side yard. And then, I unfortunately don't have any, I can't speak to what the schedule is regarding the new home. That, most of what discussion was tonight was about the, the future development of the new home and what, and its process.
Madam Mayor, a couple of things that come to mind for me on this. The first thing is that a director's exemption does not permit the director to approve something that would otherwise not be approved, other, such as a variance.
Correct. That's correct. It's supposed to be, it's basically a very minor-
Okay.
-project exempted from design review.
Okay. And it's discretionary to the, to the director?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then we've heard a number of people speak about the things that they believe are illegal that have taken place on the property. It would be very helpful if the, either the people submit a list of things that they believe are being done illegal so that we could respond to them with the section of the ordinance that would indicate that those things are legal. And if they're not legal, then we need to find that out too. That's my suggestion.
Okay, good.
And I have a couple more questions, then I'll come to you.
Okay.
When did the director's exemption occur?
I'll have to ask Ms. Wald to respond to that.
And has the time limit for an appeal on the director's exemption expired?
Yeah. Okay, so the, the director's exemption, I believe, was October 2013. It was when Ann McLaughlin was here. And yes, the appeal period would already have expired.
Okay, that was, council member-
For the last couple of years, there's been a lot of controversy around walls. One of the things that we did ask staff to bring back to us was the question of director's exemptions, which have also shown, rid their ugly head recently as well. So, I'm thinking that maybe in addition to the director's exemption in this discussion, we should have a review of our wall policy. Because one of the complaints that I hear most often when a wall is spoken about is its height, and how it's obscuring views, and how it's impeding the small-town character that we all profess to, to want to protect. So I think that should be added to that as well, because it's coming back too often. I think it needs to be dealt with.
And I'm going to make one final request. Because we have so many people interested in the project at 11:05 North Signal, even though the director's exemption, the time to appeal has expired, is there a way that if one or two or however many council members wanted to review this, even though the director's exemption appeal period has expired, would that be possible?
Fred, I can't answer that this evening. I don't know.
Okay, well, you get the idea.
We will, we will answer it for you, but-
There are so many people in this room. I feel they need to be heard, both pro and con, and I would like to find a way to have that happen. Any other comments?
Um, Madam Mayor?
Nope.
Oh, I just make one last comment?
No, because it's not an agendized item. I'm trying to, I would hope to find a way to put it on the council's agenda so we can have this conversation. But it does no good right now. There is no action we can take, because it is not an agendized item.
I understand that, but I would just want to say that my, I'm the general contractor for the project, and my sign-
No. Stop.
Stop.
Because no one can hear you from the audience, and I'm, I would like to stop the conversation on this. I see a whole room full of people, all with individual perceptions and ideas and preferences. It is not an agendized item. Mayor Pro Tem, Smith?
I just actually agree with all my colleagues, and so if we bring this back as an agendized item, those are all issues that we need to look at. Thank you.
Okay, so, we're asking you, Mr. Fletcher, to see if there's some way that we can, as the council, take a look at this. Is, and should we take a straw vote from this council to see if that's really the direction the majority of the council wishes to go?
I would rather, I'd rather not have any action taken. The message is clear. I need to spend time with the staff and, and, and clarify for you what was approved, what was not approved, what's pending, what's over and done with, and what's subject to future approvals, and give you at least nothing else, a good menu of what's, what the whole project is.
Madam Mayor. I, I just think this has all started with a director's exemption issue, and I think that, that it's a really unfortunate thing, and I hope that we can come to some resolution that, so this never happens again. Because Lucy's put a tremendous amount of money and time into this, and the neighbors have a tremendous amount of upset about what's happened because they weren't told about this, and we have got to resolve this so this doesn't come back to us again.
And I would like to, to say to the public, sometimes when there's an issue like this that comes like under unscheduled items, you probably go, go away feeling like we have not heard you, or we are not listening to the majority of, of the, the public. The fact is, we are more restricted than you are. Because you can come up to the microphone and state your opinion, but because it's not an agendized item, we do not have that, that, that privilege. Nor should we state an opinion pro or con until it is an agendized item, because if we did, we would already prejudice your, the city council as a body. So, I hope that makes somebody feel better. Okay, that's all the public comment cards I have. And we do have an urgency item on tonight's agenda, Item 5, regarding moratorium on water wells. But I'm going to ask that we go ahead and do the consent calendar and then go to Item 5.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar.
Is there, roll call? Blatts?
Yes.
Clap. Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. Okay, now I'd like to take up Item 5. It's quiet. We, council is in session.
I think the sheriff just went out there.
Madam Mayor, if I could for a moment, I think that you are just indicating that you are going to move Item 5 on the agenda-
Correct.
-before Item 2?
Yes.
Okay, then I don't need to request it.
Okay. Okay, and the Item 5 is a urgency ordinance placed, well, I don't have it here, but, well, I haven't-
I put a new agenda on the diocese.
Okay. Item 5 is consideration of adoption of an urgency ordinance pursuant to California Code Sections 36934, 36937, that would establish a moratorium on new water wells in the city of Ojai. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Earlier this afternoon, the County Board of Supervisors adopted an urgency ordinance prohibiting, or putting a moratorium on permits on wells. And that affects all the incorporated areas, including the unincorporated area around the city of Ojai, but does not impact the city of Ojai. The proposed urgency ordinance would put a very similar moratorium in place within the city of Ojai. This, as we indicated, is an urgency ordinance. It requires a fourth-fifth affirmative vote of the city council to be approved. If approved, it would be in effect for 45 days. And then, at the December 9th meeting, we would have a public hearing to consider extension of it for the remainder of a one-year period of time.
At December 9th, you said?
December 9th, yeah. So, that's the last meeting that occurs within the 45-day period. The, the moratorium on issuing well permits is justified primarily by the current drought conditions, the condition of our water resource here in Ojai, in the Ojai Basin, and also new state law, which was recently passed, which has certain requirements relating to the management of water basins. I did also want to mention that you have two well permit applications under Item Number 2 as a public hearing. Those would be exempted from this moratorium and could still be approved if the moratorium's approved as is written. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from council?
Madam Mayor, I do have a question for, for staff. During this moratorium, are you suggesting that we work with the county to further do more studies or research about our water basin?
That's a, that's a, a good comment and a good suggestion, and I think we should coordinate closely with the county.
Yeah, I have a number of speaker cards. I think I'd like to start off with Supervisor Steve Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor Strobel and other council members. If I could just start with a question, I know you have a three-minute time limit. If you want me to stay within that, I'll make my comments a little bit differently than if I could go to about five or six minutes.
I'm not going to restrict you to three minutes.
Great. Thank, thank you very much. I'll try to be as brief as I can. First, I just want to compliment you for putting this, agendizing this on short notice, and I realize that it was very short notice, and you're all probably still trying to get up to speed in terms of how an urgency ordinance like this works. The board voted four to one today after a four-hour hearing. I spent considerable time working on this ordinance with our county council, three of our attorneys in the county council office, I think very knowledgeable, great research. There were all kinds of arguments raised by, as you could imagine, by attorneys representing various people who opposed the ordinance, suggesting that it wasn't legal, et cetera. Our county council, at the end of all of that hearing, still feel very confident that, that they've written an appropriate ordinance at this point in time. Bottom line, I think you have to ask this question. Is this moratorium good policy or not for the city of Ojai? I would offer to you that it is, and I would offer that in our four-hour hearing today, when it was for the larger area for Ventura County, we heard very little about what was wrong with the policy. Instead, what we heard was, we need delay. We, you know, we should, we should postpone taking any strong action. And one, and two, a criticism of the process, saying, there hasn't been enough engagement of the stakeholders, et cetera. I'd say 85, 90% of our arguments against it came from that. So I want to address those two specific arguments before I go into the specific reasons why I think it's good policy for the citizens of Ojai. And first is process. If you're trying to do a moratorium banning new wells, and you announce the normal process, which is a second read of your ordinance, 30 days later it takes effect, and, and you have a county that has an ordinance that you have adopted also, that says you're going to process well applications in 15 days, you will have a flood of well applications before you ever get to put the moratorium into place. And it's, I found it very fascinating. One of the objections that we had from the Foreign Bureau was, what's the rush? It's very hard to put in your application for a well. It's all, they listed all the requirements that you have to have. They said, people aren't going to do that quickly. It's, it's a very, and then what we find out is, we announced this last week on, on Wednesday, on Friday and Monday, just on Friday and Monday, we received 31 new well applications. And that it takes us to, that's as many well applications as we would get, that's 60% of the well applications we got in 2013, 2012, 2011, any of those years. So, I think you are justified in saying, if you're going to do a well moratorium, you have to do this kind of a process. You have to announce it. It's transparent, but it doesn't have the normal stakeholder process. The second thing that you hear is the issue of delay, which somewhat is related to the process. They'll say, because of the process, you need to, you need to delay as you go forward. I would offer to you and submit that delay was the argument that was used by the people opposed to groundwater pumping 100 years ago, when the state of California was trying to adopt the laws regulating water rights and water extraction here in California. So they decided to regulate surface water, but they said, we'll get around to groundwater later, because that's complicated. And here we are, 100 years later, with the first piece of state legislation that, that is a comprehensive piece of state legislation dealing with groundwater, after we've had tremendous overdraft to put many basins at risk, and we've adopted probably, as we look back on it, we'd say, this is not good policy in terms of what we've done. So delay is just another, another request for us to do something that unfortunately elected officials do too often, and that is postpone hard decisions and kick those hard decisions down the road. And in, when it comes to groundwater policy, there has been a terrible absence of leadership in California in terms of willingness to make the hard decisions as, as you go forward. Mike Solomon, who is the executive director of the United Water Conservation District, they're charged with trying to recharge the aquifer down in Fox Canyon. He stood up today in front of the board, said they had been spending, ever since 2003, they'd been meeting with the Santa Paula pumpers to try to simply agree on what is the proper amount of water that you can be taking out of the Santa Paula Basin. And they kept saying, every time they would get closer, they'd say, well, we need to do another study. We need to do this, that, et cetera. And his, his point, the phrase that he used today was, the demand for consensus is simply a tactic for delay as you go forward. So now, let me tell you the reasons why I think it is very appropriate and good policy for, for the city of Ojai. As was mentioned by your, by your city manager, Mr. Clark, you're going to be surrounded now- Mr. Clark, you're going to be surrounded now, as a result of the board vote today, with the moratorium all around. And you will have a rush of new well applications, and you'll have people very interested in getting wells in here, because there is a well moratorium that'll be, that is being instituted now on an emergency basis by the Board of Supervisors. I was at a recent water Chautauqua that was at the Ojai Valley Inn. I don't know if any of you were there, but at that Chautauqua, I still remember Emily Thatcher, agricultural interest here in Ventura County, and she stood up and she said, "You know, when Casitas started increasing the water rates for, for, to ag agricultural users as a result of state law that said they had to start to increase those rates," she said, "You know, we encourage farmers to go out and put in their own wells." And when they did, she said, "I was really happy about that." She, "I just said, 'They're sticking it to Casitas.'" She said, "And then our well went dry." And she said, "And I'm not so happy about that anymore." And it, I, I have to tell you, that is what started me on this, "Wow, the current users of groundwater are at risk from new potential users that could affect everybody's wells that are out there." And one fundamental public policy that you have in front of you is, is this the appropriate time to protect current users from potential new uses of the groundwater? And I would offer to you, and submit to you, that I think it definitely is at this point in time, and particularly here in the Ojai Valley. There are problems with the groundwater. I was stunned to hear people today, and people in the last few days that have contacted me, that say, "You know, it's really not that bad. You know, we're in a drought, but we go into drought and groundwater goes down." There, this is a serious drought, and we have more and more people trying to tap into the groundwater. We have had, in the, in the county of Ventura, a fifty percent increase in the number of new well applications. And that's new wells. I'm not talking about repairing wells or wells that are getting destroyed. That's new well applications. We've had a fifty percent increase in the first ten months of 2014, relative to any year, 2010, 2011, 2012, 2013. There is a run on groundwater out there, and we have state regulation coming. That state regulation will almost certainly require sustainability plan to be submitted for the Ojai Basin and for the Upper Ventura River, because that sustainability plan, by January 31st, the state will identify which basins in the state of California are of medium or high priority, and those basins must have a sustainability plan. Now, as, it's, it's a complicated system that they set up. It's a classic state thing, "Kick it down the road. Let us all fight about it. Try to figure it out," et cetera. Those will be challenging agencies to create and challenging plans to create. There will be tremendous incentive by those people who want to keep sinking straws into the aquifer, who want to, still have unregulated pumping for as long as possible, to try to delay the implementation of those sustainability plans. I would submit to you that the only way to try to reverse that incentive is to have a moratorium that gives people an incentive to say, "Until we have a plan, the county's plan is a little bit different than yours in terms of expiration." Now, yours expires in forty-five days, and you have to hear it again for, for a year. I'm sure that's city rules. The way our plan works is this. We have written it, so it is the whole, for, for, for the Ojai Valley in particular, it's the whole Ventura River watershed until January 31st of 2015, so about ninety days from now. At that point in time, the, the moratorium will narrow down just to those basins that the state of California identifies as high or medium priority basins. So, automatically, we won't take another vote, or this automatically narrowed down. Then, the moratorium will stay on those basins, which, which today the state calls the Ojai Basin and the Upper Ojai, Upper Ventura River as high and medium priority. It will stay on those basins until those basins have a sustainability plan. Now, I would submit to you, that sounds like good policy to me, that before you start letting new wells go in, you should have a plan. What is the plan? Right now, there is no plan that is out there. And if you're a policymaker, and you sit on that agency, that sustainability agency, which right now, you have one vote on the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency, it is much more difficult to say, "No, you can't put in another well. We have too many," or, "Yes, you can put in a well, but you're going to be limited to just this amount." But until that plan is put into effect, you won't have the ability to say that, and people can sink wells, and people will be standing in, in front of this city council potentially, and certainly in front of that, that management agency, and saying, "I've been pumping for the last two years. I've been pumping..." And they, they can pump almost an unlimited amount of water. There's, there's no regulation. So, in this era of regulation coming, this is an appropriate, I think, government policy for us to have, to try to say, "Hold on. Let's get the sustainability plan in place before we have a lot more straws going in to move forward." And I think those are the major points that I would like to make, and I would, I would just offer this. When that time comes, imagine this hypothetical scenario, if you don't do the moratorium, and then finally, the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency says, "All right, we have to stop. Maybe we even have to go to the, the last ten wells that went in, and we have to say, 'You have to cut back.'" You will have all of those people saying, "This will cost jobs. There will be economic impacts. There will be other impacts. There will be impacts on their livelihood." That argument will always be there. It won't change. Whenever you decide to take action, I would suggest to you that it's actually better to take the action now. You'll have fewer impacts than you will after a big run, because you will have a run on well applications here now. And once those all get approved and in the ground, particularly if they go in before December 31st, they will have prescriptive rights, and they'll have to be considered at that point in time. The only way to avoid that, I think, is to have a moratorium. Thank you very much. I appreciate the extra minutes to be able to address you about this issue.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, could I ask the supervisor a question? We had a presentation at the last City Council meeting from the Groundwater Management Agency, who told us that our basin is in pretty good shape right now. Yet, the state has considered this to be in a drought situation, not in very good shape. Is that your understanding?
Well, I would, I would offer to you, that's, that's probably not the, the accurate way to read it. The state made their determination of medium and high priority all the way back in 1980. And so, the state is not out there, unfortunately, doing the monitoring that they should be doing with these basins. I would submit to you, from our well monitoring, this basin has very depressed groundwater levels at this point in time. The Ojai Basin is different than other basins, but it is connected to the whole Ventura River watershed at, at certain levels. So, when you get it down low enough, it doesn't spill. But when it's higher, and I'm not a water expert, but when it's higher, it does. One of the things that we've certainly learned, I'm on the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency, these basins are connected, all right? And one of the things we have to do is have a better understanding of the, how these basins are connected. So, I've been, I was asked, and I appreciate you asking the question, because I was approached by three members of the Ojai community, Mr. McPherson, Mr. Hages, and Mr. Green, they wrote a letter saying, "Don't do this, because it will affect the whole Golden State flow argument that is out there." I asked our county councils about that, and they feel like they're, that are, they, I, I have great respect for the three of them in terms of their leadership of flow. I simply disagree with them in terms of the fact that this will have the significant impact. Nobody knows what, what a court of law will decide, but our county councils clearly felt that that was not a, an argument that should stop us from, from going forward. I note that I talked with Casitas, Mr. Bagley from Casitas, and he felt that their attorney felt the same way. But in terms of the, of the basins, the next thing I was asked to do was to look at that hearing, and I did look at your hearing, and listen to the arguments. And the way I understand the argument was that, in the middle of your depression, groundwater quality is not very good, as Golden State is pumping out of there, that people away from that depression could put in their own well and improve their own groundwater, but that would mean that the other people that can't afford a well, and I guess that's what I mean when I say protecting everybody, protecting the public's good, those people, you know, would be getting some better water quality for that particular resident in that situation. But that, and, and the argument that, that would improve water quality on the, down the road, I think is a, is certainly a stretch. I don't, I don't spend all my time studying your basin. I do feel confident that our experts say, "This basin is a very stressed basin, and it is connected to the other basins and does have an impact, and that we're all sort of in this together." What happens in Ojai affects discharge in the San Antonio Creek, which affects the Ventura River basins down lower, et cetera. Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett, before you step away from the podium, I'd like to see if any other council members have questions for you.
Madam Mayor-
Councilmember Laura.
Well, thank you Supervisor Bennett for coming and explaining this. I, I still have questions about the moratorium, exactly how you're getting to identify if our basin is going to be high or, or medium. What criterias are you looking?
We're not. It's the state of California that will, that, the new state law that was passed just recently requires the state to examine all of the basins in the state of California, which they've already have mapped them all. They've already originally identified which basins are medium and high. Go back and look at those basins. There are a number of criterion, I don't have all those, that the state uses. One of them will be, what is the level of stress that the basin is in. But others are, the level of importance does that, does that groundwater have for the residents in that area, for the economic activity in that area, et cetera. So, if a basin has a lot of people that are dependent upon it, et cetera. So, when they did this original thing back in 1980, the Ojai Basin was identified as a medium priority basin. I, it's hard for me to imagine that the Ojai Valley will be less of a priority. It would probably be more, given the fact that we're in a much more serious drought and groundwater. But it's not us making that determination. We are trying to tie in, and I think the real good government policy here is, we're trying to tie into that, saying, we, if a basin is identified by the state as medium or high and requires a sustainability plan, then we're simply doing what we can, and I go back to that absence of, there aren't a lot of things that you can do about groundwater or that we can do, but one of the things we can do is put a well moratorium on and, and encourage good regulations to get adopted by these sustainability agencies.
So, you're not really taking any input from, like, for example, the OBGMA here in Ojai, or any other studies? You're just depending on what the state's going to classify that basin, and is, that's correct, right?
That, that's correct.
Are you in communication with the state to see if they're going to do any further studies on it? Because it sounds like 1980s was the last time they did it. Seems quite a, a long time-
Well, it's hard to get answers from the state at this point in time, because they're overloaded, and everybody's asking about, "What are they going to do with their basins," et cetera. And again, I would offer to you, it's not just, is the basin, what is the level of, of stress on the basin at this point in time, but what is the importance of the basin? And I would offer to you that if, if we have, and, and this is, this is probably going to be the classic, certainly in the county, we adopted, "It's going to rain next week," right? One rainfall, a series of rainfalls, is not going to suddenly change and say, "This basin is not very important to the people of the Ojai Valley." This basin is going to be very important to the people of the Ojai Valley, regardless of whether we have the rain or not. But that's the kind of thing that the sustainability agency ultimately will decide. They may, when the sustainability agency comes together, they may say, "All right, we think you should continue a moratorium, or we think it should be a moratorium on this kind of well, but not that kind of well." Or, they may say, "There shouldn't be any moratorium," right, "out there." But, but far better for that, for a moratorium to be in place until somebody can make that decision in, with a plan that can actually be evaluated by the rest of the citizens. Right now, that plan isn't out there. Nobody can evaluate that particular plan, because it, it doesn't exist at this point in time.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Supervisor Bennett? Supervisor Bennett, thank you very much for taking your time and coming up and answering questions for us. I know the county just voted on this this afternoon, so we were waiting-
Vote was four to one.
Pardon?
Vote was four to one to do the moratorium.
So, so I've been waiting with bated breath to get an, an update, so I appreciate you, you coming and answering our questions.
Thanks for your time and your interest. Appreciate it.
And if the lobby has cleared, it's okay to open those ga, the gates. It's okay to open the doors again. Okay, I'm going to our other speaker, speaker cards now. Brandon Henson?
Good evening, council members. I've spent the last several days dealing with the county's eleventh-hour notification of their well moratorium. First off, just because Mr. Bennett and the county of Ventura want to get sued for their heavy-handed governmental politics, I don't know that the Ojai Valley should follow suit. Mr. Bennett asked, "What's wrong with the policy?" The policy does nothing to stop usage in the basin, which is the big thing that he's trying to do, is, is stabilize the basins. The, the policy does not one single thing to stop usage. All it does is stop people from drilling new wells. Most of those wells will be water, water usage shifted from municipal usage to private usage. It's not, it's, it's in no way going to stop the usage or slow the usage down. He keeps mentioning that fifty percent increase in the, in the water well applications this year over 2013, and 12, and 11, and 10. I called the county yesterday and tried to get them to give me the data from 2005, 2006, 2007, before the economic downturn. Luckily, Supervisor Foy had that information, because the county opted not to give it to me. And Foy was very clear in that the permit applications are on track for all of the years in this century, prior to the economic downturn, and just now starting to get back to the level that they were prior to the economic downturn. We here in the state of California all have a right to use the water under our properties. We all may need to regulate that usage. We may need to restrict that usage to some degree, but whether a moratorium is put in place, whether the state is regulating the, the basins, every single person, even according to the state today and their new laws, say that every single person has a right, every single landowner, that is, has a right to drill a well on their property for reasonable use of water on their property. This moratorium in the county and here in the city completely goes in, in the, in the face of that, that particular law. Bennett mentioned something about the water quality, which we talked about at length two weeks ago with Mr. Keer, in that if you have new wells put in, especially here in the Ojai Valley, you have new wells put in that are away from the central area of pumping that Golden State pumps from, or what I think Keer referenced as the cone of depression. What happens is, the load is, to some degree or another, taken off of the Golden State system, so Golden State pumps a little less water, and the, the new well pumps a little more water from somewhere else in the basin, which in turn equalizes some of the use in the basin. So, the water quality will actually come up, to some degree, in the Golden State wells, as well, the, the water quality that that person's getting from their private well actually comes up as well. One of the other things I want to address is, does anybody know what the Brown Act is? Okay. The, the Brown Act says that we need seventy-two hours' notice before something like this comes in front of us as, as the public. I understand there's an emergency section there, but I find it almost impossible for the, for the county, I mean, for the city of, of Ojai's council members to find this as an emergency. Only two weeks ago, we all sat here and heard an hour-long or hour-plus-long presentation from the staff hydrogeologist for the OBGMA. It was very clear that there was no emergency here, that our basin was in fairly healthy condition, and that adding wells with, around the basin is actually a good thing for the basin health, not a bad thing. So, I don't see how you guys can-
Finish up.
I don't see how you guys can get this passed through, you know, because of the Brown Act.
And I do want to comment, it's not an emergency ordinance. It is an urgency ordinance. There is a difference.
Okay. You know, I guess the last thing is, is that, you know, the, the sort of sentiment that I'm hearing from, from Supervisor Bennett is, is this last settler syndrome, that I've got everything I need, and I don't think anybody else should get any from this point forward. I think that's a horrible tactic, and I'll, I'll close with that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Pat McPherson?
Hi, Pat McPherson, 1111 North Montgomery.
Hi, Pat McPherson, 1111 North Montgomery. Thank you. Hope you had a good vacation. Hope you had a good vacation. I have great respect for Supervisor Bennett, but I feel that I just went to a Barnum and Bailey circus and I got sold a good act. Here's the issue as I see it. I listened four times to the OBGMA presentation last week, or our last session by Jordan Kerr, and he said any new well is pumping, this is we're talking about in the city of Ojai, is pumping the same water that is currently supplied by Golden State. Okay? In fact, he said, as Brandon just said, it may be better for both parties because it doesn't draw the wells down so low. I want to repeat that. I'm going to repeat it twice. Any new well is pumping the same water that's currently being supplied by Golden State. Again, listen to this carefully now and think about it. Any new well that is pumping, any new well is pumping the same water that is currently being supplied by Golden State. Now, if what OBGMA representative says is true, then the justification for creating this ordinance is simply nonsense. Because if you put in a new well, you're pumping the same water. So what's wrong with that? It's not going to add more water to the basin. It's going to, it's not going to get rid of the, it's not going to get rid of the drought. It's not going to lead to conditions such as degraded water, as is in this ordinance says. It's the same water. It's not increase the incidence of some wells going dry, it's the same water. It's not going to protect the current communities, growers and users, it's the same water. It's not going to decrease the possibility that groundwater supplies will be exhausted because it's the same water. There simply is no justification for putting a moratorium on wells in the city of Ojai. It's the same water. Thank you.
Good evening, Steve Bennett, Madam Mayor, Council, and members of the community. Did I cover everybody? Okay. I, honored customer as I am, you know, to be up here and discussing issues.
We're so happy to have you.
Yeah, I know. There's a lot of stuff going on here tonight, and I don't know if I'm going to get to a lot of it, but I'm left a little confused because the feel-good idea, you know, that if people are punching holes in the ground and taking water out, that if we stop that, that that stops water usage. And as Pat said, and the speech that was made here said, that isn't true, it may actually improve the water levels and give us better water with the same amount being pumped. So I listened to that speech, you know, online, and I changed my mind. I said, I'm going to get away from the feel-good and the obvious, which is you put more wells in, you use more water, because that doesn't seem to be the truth. What it is, is you redistribute where the water goes. But what you do create is you create a monopoly. It says, we are going to give the people who already have wells a special category. You're protected, your water and your land are now worth a lot because nobody else can drill. People who want to drill and use water on their own property will, are getting that right taken away. And who benefits from that? Well, they get a monopoly. Nobody can challenge them. Nobody can say, I don't like the rates that you're charging, I'll drill my own well and whatever it costs, I'm going to use my own water on my own property and I don't need to worry about the rate case and all the increases, which are quite significant, coming up from Golden State and other places. So I said, okay, so what are we doing? We are attempting to patch a system that the state is going to do some work on. Well, I'm a little concerned that the state speaks out of both sides of its mouth. They're busy saying, we got to save water, our groundwater is going, getting lower all our reservoir, we're in a state of crisis. But we still have a law out there that says, you, Ojai and everybody else, you, Ojai, you're going to build 432 more residences of all kinds, and where you get the water from, from that, you're going to have to take it out of the ground. We're trying to save that water and you're telling us, do this and take it out of the ground. Then they got these projects for thousands and thousands of development homes out in the desert.
Finish up, Stan.
And you think that they're investing money, you know, not knowing that somebody's going to get water for them? No. So the water is not the issue, the money is the issue. And I think that we're not saving anything and we are creating monopolies and benefits where there's no need to do it. Will there be people who violate this and game it? Yeah, but I think basically when government steps in and says, we're going to now take over control because we know better, I tell you to look at what the state's doing and look at what all these control agencies are doing, and they don't know what the hell they're doing.
Thank you. Randy Haney. Mr. Haney, I'd be so thankful if you'd limit your comments to three minutes.
I'll be real quick. Randy Haney, 513 Pleasant Avenue. You know, we used to run around yelling, the sky's falling, the sky's falling. Now we're going to be running around yelling, the wells are drying, the wells are drying. You know, this is government at its best, and I think that's what probably bothers me the most. We only act when it seems like, again, the sky's falling. This drought's been in the making for three to five years. Why haven't we been thinking about this for three to five years? Why all of a sudden is it today that we need to put a moratorium on wells? Why haven't we been thinking about this for five years? Why hasn't Ojai been thinking about this for five years or three years? So that's a concern, that's probably my first concern, is again, we're going to react to put a fire out and we're going to put this fire out with water that we don't have. Or water that we have an abundance of, but we don't know how to get to. So it just keeps going back in a circle. You know, let's take 1105, because it's on the tip of my tongue, and we're going to put 235 trees in, how are we going to water those? How's she going to maintain that nine-acre property with a vision of smart water applications? That question wasn't brought up tonight, and probably I should have, but again, 235 trees, five-gallon, 15-gallon, 25, 24-inch box, whatever, they're going to need a lot of water to initially to start them up. So is she going to have a well?
No, she's rich.
Is that well process a part of her application? So again, water just keeps cycling everywhere we go here. So I just had a couple of questions, listening to everyone talk, and again, I have the utmost respect. Pardon me? I have the utmost respect for Mr. Bennett. I have the utmost respect for Mr. Hanson, because this is what he does for a living. But these questions came to my mind. If we put a moratorium on, for no new wells, can't we put a moratorium on the number of wells? Does it have to be one or can it be the other? I mean, is it zero? Or can we say, you know, for 45 days, we're only going to allow five applications? Or in the next 60 days or the next 90 days? So it seems like there's more to this than just saying, stop completely. It seems like we might be able to do something differently that way, if you choose to go that way. What are we going to do in the moratorium? What are we going to do for 45 days? What's the discussion? I don't think we have a plan. So that concerns me. The last thing I want to say, and I had, and this has been on my mind for a long time, is we've got a sanitation district and we've got reclaimed water down there that we're just putting out to the ocean on a daily basis. Why isn't that a part of our vision, and how we're going to take that recycled water and bring it back up in here to Ojai? How we're going to apply it to our orchards, to our parks, and to our large grasslands more efficiently? And why isn't that a part of any discussion when we're talking about water in this community? Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Blatts, and I would appreciate it if you will keep your comments to three minutes. I'll remind you and the light will remind you.
Is it the red one?
It's the red one.
Thank you. Well, I am the attorney for Ojai Flow, and I am well-versed in some of these water issues. And I'll tell you, this issue just kind of sprung up on us recently, and we're still reviewing whether there'll be any impact as far as the case that's currently pending. And just to give you an update, we just yesterday filed our appeal paperwork against Golden State after our response to their appeal, and we're obviously fighting tooth and nail on that. The issue that comes up is, is there any situation that this particular moratorium may change the value on Golden State's system? And that's an answer that, as much as I respect Mr. Bennett, superior, absolutely, I mean, he's one of my favorite people and he's a former professor or teacher of mine at Nordhoff. And I appreciate the county council's opinion, it's just not specialized enough to know the true answer to that yet. And we're still trying to look at that. Because we've been dealing with the appeal, I haven't had a chance yet to discuss this issue with Jeff Otterman, counsel for Casitas, on this particular case. And if we get through this part, there'll be an eminent domain case where Golden State's system will be valued. And at that point, we want to make sure that no moratorium is causing any difference in cost, because as you can imagine, there is some concern that being one of the few, and if there's no future permitted water users or water well users in the community, that Golden State can argue at that point that their license to operate in Ojai has more value than it used to. The other thing I would say, as a general principle, and notice that there's three members of Ojai Flow up here today, saying that there may be some concerns with this particular issue. Well, I do think it's a good idea to have policies that absolutely keep an eye on how much water is being used and where we're allowing wells to go. A moratorium doesn't give you many options. What really scares me is the whole Golden State situation stems from the centralization of water resources. The more centralized they are, the more apt they are to be abused, and the more likely we are to end up in a situation that we currently have. The city council, well before any viewer here, has decided to allow the franchise agreement to move forward, centralized that power with Golden State and eliminated the power out of the public greatly for their ability to try and undo that situation. Taking away wells is another way currently that Ojai citizens have to avoid that Golden State situation that has become very tenuous, and although we're hoping to get it overturned and essentially take the system back over, that may not occur, and it may not occur quickly. And the idea that we're putting a moratorium on our ability to pull that water out of the ground when the OBGMA is the oversight agency, they've said there's no problem with it, they've said there's really only potential, maybe even benefits, from allowing people to continue to construct wells. It is disconcerting to me that we would quickly move into a policy that greater centralizes water, and at least, please, if it's possible, give us the time to at least come back to this council and say, hey, do we believe there's any potential for there to be increased value in the Golden State case that the rate payers who have passed the measure V bond are paying for? Well, that money, if we can get through this first case, is going to be coming out of that amount, and it means it's coming out of the public's pockets. Thank you.
Good job. That's all this up. Mr. Coolissey, did you want to speak on this one? The card's a little confusing after we did all of our little notes all over it.
Thank you, Mayor Strobel.
Please keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I want to say, in my prior comments, I violated one of my own rules. I wasn't working from all the available data. Now that I have a copy of the urgency ordinance, I would say that unless you eliminate Section 7E, that this agenda item has no effect on Agenda Item Number Two.
That's correct.
Because specifically exempted our applications already in place. I watched the entire county supervisors' thing through the morning and into the afternoon today, and I salute the perseverance of the county supervisors in sitting through all of that. But a couple of things that came up, I think, are key here. First of all, what we have to worry about is usage, not the number of wells that we have. And second, I listened again to the presentation by the OBGMA person, Jordan something, I can't remember his name, who I believe said there is an inherent right to drill in state law, and that inherent right also includes the right to use an unlimited amount of water from any well that is drilled under this inherent right. And so now I'm wondering, why are we talking about this at all? It sounds like anybody who wants to drill a well only has to file some paperwork, and under state law, they can drill anytime they want, and they can pull as much water out of the ground as they want. If I am incorrect about that, I would welcome being corrected. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anyone else in the audience? Come forward.
Hello. May I ask you? I didn't bring my card, I can't even, please. That's tardiness.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for the welcome. Good evening, council members. Thank you very much for addressing this subject. I'd like to speak in favor of Steve Bennett's proposal to you. And I am representing Sea Frog, and this will be interesting because I'm also part and parcel of the Flow Group, and I worked with them hand and glove to help them get the initiative passed by 87%. So I have every faith that the final court decision will go our way. I don't really think there's any judge who's going to overturn that. So, but, on to the issue at hand. Representing Sea Frog, which is Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas Ventura County. And we made a statement today at the Board of Supervisors meeting, which I did not attend. I'm going to read, it's very short, don't worry. Here's our statement. "It's time to stop draining, the draining of our groundwater basins before we empty and damage them. I'd like to address the issue of sustainability. While we have here a city council candidate who is also in the business of drilling water wells, who did not disclose that while he spoke to you, I think that that is an important part of his presentation. We do need to look at sustainability. Your job, as I see it, is to support the community in general, not one particular property owner, and to abide by the law. This is not the gold rush days anymore in California. And many landowners are entitled to pump as much as they please, and that's true. From my understanding, if you want to put Australian to the ground and take whatever you want, you can. I'm from Santa Barbara County, I know Montecito, I've seen people there spend $30,000 to $40,000 a month watering their green lawns during a drought 15 years ago. So that can be done. It's clear that groundwater needs to be shared, and that's why we have elected representatives like you and staff people, to make sure that things are done fairly and equitably. And I salute Supervisor Bennett for bringing this forward and to getting a four-to-one vote at the County Board of Supervisors. I know how difficult that was. We know who always stays out of those votes, too. With water level at some levels here in Ojai being very shallow, and having dropped 80 feet, I can't say how you can look at Ojai Water Basin as being perfectly okay. Now, I am not familiar with the policies of the local Ojai Water Basin District, and so I can't speak to that exactly. But it seems to me people are drilling deeper and deeper to pull up more water for their own use. We need to buy time and get strategic plans in place because we do have a problem with the drought here. And I'm not speaking to anyone's personal interest here, but to the interest of the community as a whole. This is fair and a responsible way to protect our citizens here in Ojai. And while I do apologize to my friends at Flow, I respectfully disagree with them on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to make a comment? All right. All right, I'll bring it back to our council. Any comments, questions?
I have a real quick statement. I'm the representative on the OBGMA. And one of the things that I have been really struggling with over the past six years I've served on that agency is the subject of monitoring. There's an ordinance that's been passed by the OBGMA to require monitoring of all wells in the OBGMA district. It has been a real struggle to get that to happen. There's been many well owners that have resisted and refused to comply. More and more are doing so because they're understanding that if they don't, and it does come to the point of adjudication someday, they're not going to be able to have a claim to any water because they haven't been monitoring it. So they won't be able to go to a water judge and say, "I use as much water and therefore I need to have that allocation." So they're starting to understand that, so they're coming forward more. But there still are well owners that aren't monitoring. And even when they are finally monitoring, the reporting is very, very sketchy upon occasion. And one of the things that I have been really, really trying to encourage is, with the monitoring, is to also include enforcement. The ordinance really is valueless without enforcement. And I'm hoping in the near future that I can encourage my fellow board members to enforce the requirement for monitoring so that we do really know how much water is coming out of the ground until we do so where we really are unclear how much is being drawn out of the basin. The definition of moratorium is temporary prohibition of an activity. I think what's important right now is we understand that what is being asked for is a moratorium, not a permanent hundred percent forever ban. California is one of the only states, if not the only state, that allows a right to dwell for water. There may be other states that also allow a right. I said it may be the only, Mr. Hanson. But it has really been a bone of contention for years and years about that right and it is finally coming forward that we do have to address this inalienable right to drill on your property and that is what the state is doing at this time with their requirement that we do develop sustainability plans, which is a really reasonable thing to require, particularly in a valley that has no source of water other than what comes out of the sky in runoff because we don't have access to the California Water Project. So we do have to really protect our water. So back to the moratorium. The point of the moratorium is for us to sit back, take a look, take a deep breath and figure out what we're going to do from this point forward. I think that's really important to understand with a moratorium. It may not last forever. It may last forever. But let's take a deep breath, sit back and say, "Okay, what are we going to do?" I think that's a reasonable thing to do in this situation. Lake Casitas is at fifty-two percent capacity right now. Fifty-two percent. The only time it was that low was in nineteen, oh dear, I wish I could remember, long time ago. It's really low. And Ventura's drawing off of Lake Casitas. Miners Oaks is drawing off of Lake Casitas. We're drawing off of Lake Casitas. The Farmers in the East End are drawing off Lake Casitas. And it's going down more and more every day. So I don't think it's an unreasonable thing to pass a moratorium at this point. And so, that being said, I am ready to make a motion, but I know that other council members may be wanting to say something as well. But that's my position at this point. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Well, I think it's eleven and a half years that I have voted no on every straw going into the basin. But my reason has actually been social justice. Most of these people are on Golden State water with charges outrageous rates. If I was a rich person living in one of the richer neighborhoods here, I would put fifteen or twenty thousand just to get off Golden State's, you know, formidable water bills. But it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon, that if you have a well on your property on, you know, whatever, Saddle Lane or something, you still have to have Golden State for domestic, for drinking water? The water that in the well is only really, it's not impotable for drinking, it's only for irrigation. Is that correct, Brandon?
No, it's the same water.
Come up to the microphone.
Come up and answer it, thank you.
It's the same water. As Pat was saying earlier, it's the exact same water that comes out of the basin.
Okay. So the water can come out of your faucets and you can safely drink it?
The only difference is Golden State does a small level of treatment to it, so it's chlorinated and has some things done to it to keep things like iron and magnesiums down, things like that. But it's generally the same water.
But generally, your clients will drink the water from the well?
A lot of our clients continue to buy water from Golden State for their home. Actually, a majority of them that have city water will keep the city water in their home and just use the...
And the water from the well is for irrigation?
That's right.
Thank you. Okay. So I voted no on every well just because I felt that the average person in our community could not have a well on their property and then were forced to use Golden State's usurious water rates for every water they used. But now it's becoming apparent that in a long-term drought like we've had, there's other issues going on besides Golden State. And I, of course, will vote yes on the moratorium because I have voted no on putting straws into the basin until we get rid of Golden State and we have some water company that will basically not charge us these ridiculous rates for water. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you all for coming and giving your statement, opinion, your concerns. And I was approached by Councilman Blatts in putting this on the agenda and I do agree. I mean, this has been such an intriguing subject for me since I got elected and since getting the first water well permit. Just because I've tried to read the information and there's always a lack of information. And I hate to say it, I'm afraid to say it, but I'm going to give my age away. In the nineteen eighties, they start classifying these basins. To me, that seems a long time ago because I wasn't even born, so I'll give you my age. But I do, I do want to point out some things that the public said and I do, I think holds a merit that it is the same water and that I do respect the OBGMA and what they've done to studies, Jordan, about decentralizing the water and the fact that water is a right here in the state. I do agree with that. I think we should continue that. But I also think that there's been a lack of leadership in terms of staying on top of water issues. I think that we need to really start addressing them. And I know that Mr. Haney's question, why, why right now? It's been going three to five years. Why not right now? Why not start doing those studies? I am very concerned with letting the state label our basin medium or high. That I don't agree. I think that we should stay with our local expert if we do decide to put on the moratorium. I think that we should look on the limited wells if we can. We have to start somewhere and we have to include our OBGMA agency because they definitely have qualified personnel and board members there. And I think that it's going to be the right. I'm not sure if the forty-five day moratorium would really make a difference in terms of having the Golden State Water Company up the value of their company. I mean, we're only talking about forty-five days to really decide what approach we're going to take. And, but I don't think that it's going to go on for a very long time. I think this is the right move to make right now and address these issues before we start allowing the wells, whether we go with the Supervisor Bennetts, the county or the state. But I think that we do need to look into this and just hash it out and see what our OBGMA agency has to say, so.
Councilmember Blatts?
Mr. Fletcher, did you have something?
I was just going to say, in terms of process going forward, I want to kind of brief you. I've determined the county's ordinance was a notice public hearing today. We didn't have time to notice it. So my advice has been to follow the state moratorium law. There's a question whether this is not really a land use moratorium. But Government Code, Section 65858, the courts have said over and over again, is the moratorium law for cities in California. So I'm recommending we follow that process, which is the initial moratorium is forty-five days. We must then hold a notice public hearing at, prior to the expiration of those forty-five days, which is going to be the December ninth council meeting. At which time we can extend it for up to a cumulative one year. And then we have the right to extend it for one more year under state law after that. If we're still, after two years, still debating the question of the sustainability plans, we'll have to make a decision about extending any moratorium beyond then. But so, so we're starting with only forty-five days and that's, assuming we're going to have a public hearing on December ninth, assuming you pass this tonight, to extend it out for a cumulative full year.
Mr. Fletcher, just a quick question now. If in forty-five days we have a public hearing, does it have to be extended out the full year or can it be something less than that?
You can do less than that.
Okay. Madam Mayor, if I could just make a couple of comments.
Okay.
This, I specifically asked it, this item be put on our agenda this evening, knowing that Supervisor Bennett was going to be bringing this before the county supervisors today. And I felt that it was extremely important that if he was going to bring it before the supervisors today, that we have it here tonight. And thank you to Councilman Laura for being able to get this on the agenda so that we can bring it to the forefront tonight. I have two comments to make and both of them are somewhat disturbing to me. And I am particularly unimpressed by OBGMA. I was impressed by the speaker and I think he's very knowledgeable, but totally unimpressed by their ability to monitor our basin, failure to enforce their own rules and regulations, not insisting on metering, having self-reporting but not paying any attention to whether people are self-reporting. And I think that's irresponsible on the part of the agency. And it's very concerning to me because I have no faith in what they tell us about our basin because of that. Yet they seem very knowledgeable. But I have very little faith in what they have to say. The second thing is that if our basin is in such good health, then why in the world do the people that put wells in also stay connected to Golden State water? And why in the world is Golden State water taking so much water out of Casitas right now? Why aren't they just pumping it out of our aquifer? There's plenty of water down there? Why are they spending the money to have to buy it from, buy it from Casitas when they can pump it out of our aquifer at no cost? Makes no sense to me. Absolutely no sense to me. As far as Flow is concerned, if there's going to be an issue, forefront in our community is getting rid of Golden State water. And Flow has done an outstanding job in that. And I wouldn't want to do anything that would stand in the way of us being able to move forward and go through the eminent domain proceeding and to pay as little as we possibly can through that eminent domain proceeding for Golden State water. So I am in favor of the moratorium. It's going to be forty-five days. It'll give Flow an opportunity to get all of their information together and come back to us to tell us whether or not there's something that we're unaware of now. It may give OBGMA an opportunity to come back to us and tell us, "Hey, we're sorry we haven't been enforcing this. We now have plans in place to enforce and to monitor the aquifer." And I'd like to know, why in the world if our aquifer has so much water in it, why is Golden State taking it from Casitas and paying an exorbitant rate from them? And also, why don't we just drill wells for people that want water and not have them stay hooked up to Golden State when Golden State is so expensive? So I think it's, as we have said earlier, groundwater is very much to be shared throughout our entire community. There's people in our community that have to pay the price of Golden State water. And I think that at this point in time, we need to take a step back and take a look at it. And then when it comes back before us in forty-five days, everybody can come in with all the data that they have and talk to us about perhaps changing it. But right now, I think we need to take a step back and really look at the situation.
Madam... Member Clap?
A clarification on the monitoring of wells. An ordinance was passed one or two years ago to require monitoring by OBGMA. Within that, there has not been any sort of mechanism to find if somebody doesn't report. As far as monitoring, every meeting, we do get a report. Comes to us, all the wells, they tell us who's monitored, who is reported. People are reporting and more and more are reporting. Still not a hundred percent. I want to make that really clear. That's important. One of the things with the valley is that most of the people that have these wells are farmers. And farmers are an independent lot, you know? And they've had these wells for decades and decades and decades. And because water is such a controversial thing in this valley, clearly, and we're seeing it now, there's, everybody's afraid right now that they're going to lose their water. And they're so used to having these wells unmonitored. And it's like, they just don't want to do it, you know? I don't want to have to monitor my well. So it's been a real struggle and it's been, there's been a very soft approach to get this done. And it's been fairly successful. And it is eighty, ninety percent maybe now, successful. But that being said, there's still no mechanism for finding when it is not reported. And it is self-reporting as well. We don't have a meter reader that goes out and reads the well. So you're trusting that the well is being, the amount being used is really truly what's being used. So I just want to clarify that, you know, and hopefully I got it right. Because I'll tell you something, I've learned of being an OBGMA, water is so complicated. I'm sure Mr. Bennett's learning this too. This is a really controversial and extremely complicated subject.
Thank you.
Here's who's drinking and water is for fighting.
Oh, man.
Okay, I have a question. In the urgency ordinance, page four of six, Section Seven, Subparagraph C, and I'll read it. Water well permit applications approved for processing. These are under, Section Seven is exemptions to water well and permit prohibitions. And subsection C is water well permit applications approved for processing by the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency. Here's my question. Provided that OBGMA has adopted an ordinance or other regulation prohibiting new groundwater extractions facilities. Has OBGMA done this?
If I may, Madam Mayor, members of the council, again, I pattern this as close as possible after the county ordinance so that we have continuity between their regulations affecting the Ojai Valley and our regulations. And this is a provision, and I don't want to speak for Supervisor Bennett, but this is a provision as an incentive to those basins that have groundwater management agencies to follow the lead of Fox Canyon and adopt their own regulations on new wells. And basically, the idea being if OBGMA were to adopt their own moratorium or regulation on new pumping, then we wouldn't have to do it. And over time, theoretically, over time, this responsibility could shift from the city to OBGMA for effectively enforcing it over time. So that's what I assumed was the county's motivation. And I'm happy to be corrected if I was wrong about that. But I wanted to make sure we pattern ourselves after the county so that we have as much cohesiveness between the rules as applied inside the city and outside the city here in the valley.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you. Any other questions from council?
I just want to add that nothing in my remarks would indicate that any well permits that would be currently in the pipeline would not be exempted from this, meaning they would be exempt from the moratorium.
And I will make a comment, and one more comment. And that is, you have heard me over the last almost four years repeatedly say, "I do not support retroactive legislation." So even though it was suggested that we eliminate a certain section to eliminate an exemption, I would not have supported that because we have, we have two applications next up on our agenda and I will treat them as I would have treated them had we not had this discussion. Because I do not agree that we make... Because I do not agree that we make laws and then make them retroactive. That's all my comments. Anyone else, council?
We're ready for a-
Are we ready for a motion?
Madam Mayor?
I would move to, I'd have to do both, the categorical exemption. I move to approve a categorical exemption. And number two, adopt an urgency ordinance establishing a moratorium on new well, water well permits. Do I need to say for the length of time?
No.
Okay. It's implied in here.
Yes.
Don't you have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
An urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ojai, California declaring a moratorium on the issuance of permits for private water wells and establishing certain exemptions and procedures for waivers. Blatts?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda, we took that one out of order. The next-
Supervisor. I didn't want to take a second bite of the apple before you voted, but since you voted, if, could I just add one or two pieces of information I think might be helpful for you for the next forty-five days?
Okay.
Just, just do this very quickly, but I know the issue's been, been raised about if people are, if people take water from new wells. And we had some, some discussion about that as we tried to put our ordinance together. The argument being that it's the same water. One of the things that we put down in terms of one of the purposes and the reasons is that what we don't want is that people who are on a municipal water system, such as Golden State Water, et cetera, we don't want them to avoid the conservation measures that are being put out by those water districts. And the basic conservation measure is to increase prices. You use, you know, you know, they have tiered pricing, and as you get into the higher tiers, you have to pay higher rates. To the extent that people sink wells, and once they've gone to the expense of sinking that well, they only have the pumping cost of that water, those people then avoid, or they decrease, their incentive for conservation goes down. So you could have theoretically, you can have more water being pumped because the conservation. It was one of the big things in our ordinance, and I know as this comes back in forty-five days, I don't know where I'll be in that process. I wanted you to at least have that early in the process. The other is that I'm having trouble, and I'll be trying to research this over time, but the argument that, that putting in more wells is good for the aquifer would suggest that, you know, more wells is good, and more wells would be even better. And I, I have difficulty with that, particularly if, when you put those wells in, there's no restriction on the amount of water that you can pump from those wells. So those will be two things that I'll be trying to, to get information on. But I wanted to give you that one basic thing, which is the conservation aspect, or the avoidance of conservation policies by those that are hooked up to municipal systems going on was, is one of the major goals. We have a little bit different interpretation about where you are with your county council about the Bill of High Basin. But again, I didn't want to come up and talk before you voted, that didn't feel like an appropriate time. But I thought I'd pass that on to you as you move forward. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Mayor, could I just interject real quick before moving on to the next item? I just want to be clear on, on the next forty-five days about what, what staff is, what we direct the staff to do. I don't know if there's any way we, we could be more specific on how we're going to tackle this until it comes the next forty-five days. Because I, I felt like there's some legitimate concern from members from Flow here. And then I would personally like to see if, if we could also involve OBGMA and, and some of us as council members to, to follow up and do our, our best to see what approach we're going to take in terms of, of what this moratorium is going to focus on, I guess, for Ojai. And I don't know if we could be more clear, or if we could develop a task force, if we don't have that, that ability to do right now because of the lack of information. I don't know how the other council members feel, or what staff recommends.
If you have specific issues that you would like city staff to address during this upcoming forty-five days, I would like for you to simply state those, or as many of them that come to mind. Because that would be, that would give clear direction to Mr. Clark.
Well, those are really my concerns, is whether we involve the right stakeholders and make, in our community, and present something that, that has, that is valid for our, for Ojai.
Are you suggesting putting together a citizen subcommittee?
Or not only that, but gathering this, asking, for example, Flow, citizens or the board of Flow, if they have particular concerns that they would like us to look at? Just clarifying a little bit more of what we want to do as a, as a, as a city in terms of wells.
Madam Mayor?
Well, I, I'll throw out a comment, and then I'll go to you. And that is, I would like for us to review and evaluate, and you probably did that at the last meeting. But I have some concerns about our, the city's relationship with the power we vested in OBGMA. What do, what do we expect from OBGMA? What are we getting? How can we correct it?
Councilmember Clapp?
Just to address something Councilman Laura said about getting a task force together. Mr. Bennett said something that was, was very, he very well stated, and I hope I can quote it properly. Consensus is a method of delay. Is that how you put it? And I would like-
I stole it, I stole it from Mike Solomon today.
Oh. It is, it's a strategy-
The demand for consensus was a tactic of delay.
A demand for consensus is a, is a tactic of delay. And I, and I, I think that right now, we need to leave this to staff and to the direction of council. I don't want to get this, this subject to be diverted into a, I don't want it stuck in committee. I think it's really important that we keep, narrow our focus, and that we have staff here, and that staff can communicate with the county, and can communicate with the OBGMA hydrologist, and people that are necessary in order for us, and, and the attorneys for, for the county, and our attorney can, can speak. And I think that's where we need to begin. I think if we start having committees, it's going to become unwieldy and impossible.
And I agree with Councilmember Clapp. I, at this point in time, I'm not interested in seeing it go to committee. That's why I ask from council members, if there's specific issues, let's give those issues to Mr. Clark, with the anticipation that when this comes back in forty-five days, we will have the answers to our issues, and then we can engage the public.
Madam Mayor, the one thing that I don't want to see happen is, we sit here in the next forty-five days and don't do anything, and we're back here in forty-five days for another public hearing, and, and we're right in the same spot we are now. So I would really encourage people from the public that have issues that they want to be addressed, to submit those to Mr. Clark. I think that we need to engage with the county to see what, what's going on there. Perhaps engage with the state. I don't know what you're going to get out of the state, but find out what's going on there. I definitely want Flow to come forward with any issues they have with regard to whether this is going to restrict anything to do with the eminent domain proceeding. And that would be in conjunction with talking with Casitas. But those are the kinds of things that I think we need to look at.
And I'll add, it was mentioned in the staff report, but the impact on our moratorium and our intent to conserve our water. With the sustainability plan that's being required by the state, we, we're supposed to have a sustainability plan in place by January thirty-first. Is that correct?
No. So it's a, it's actually quite a long process. My understanding is that the state has to decide which basins are at what level.
Higher, moderate.
And then if, if we're at a moderate or a high level, then they're required to prepare a sustainability plan. But there's a long timeframe, I think it's twenty-twenty-one or something like that, by when, by when, by when they have to have that sustainability plan put together. So we can, we can provide a synopsis of the state law as part of our staff work before the ninth.
Any other comments, directions to staff regarding well-
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's exactly what I was looking for, some type of direction, so that we don't come back in forty-five days and we have nothing.
And remember, whether it's members of the public or members on the council, if tomorrow morning you wake up with this brilliant question, most of us can, can sit down at our computers and send it to Rob Clark, City Manager, City of Ojai.
I'm a water expert.
And Madam Mayor, real quickly, Mr. Bennett, do you have, would you mind stepping forward and telling us whether you have any suggestions as, or any suggestions on how we should proceed, or will you be in communication with Mr. Clark, or?
Well, I'm happy to be in communication with Mr. Clark as much as you would like. And I think you asked some appropriate questions that you want to get, you know, further information on. You'll be on a little bit different track than, than we are. We went with a public safety moratorium. You're going with a land use moratorium, a very different sort of animals legally and defensively and, and all of that. But I think there's still this considerable amount of overlap, particularly in terms of the information. So I will certainly try to pass that on, and certainly I very much respect the issues raised by Flow, and I want to try to research those and try to understand those as much as possible as we go forward. I would, I would, I would do that. The, yeah, no, but I'd be happy, happy to work with you, or, and any of the council members that have any questions, I'd be happy to try to, to answer those also.
And I'd like to- And I would like clarification on the difference between the land use and public safety issue, and why one, one versus the other. So if you two can communicate about that, so we can have a better understanding as to why that was done, that'd be great.
And congratulations on your leadership tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And that was the comment I was going to make. If, if, I would like us to overlap enough that we have a real strong ordinance when we consider it again. I don't, I prefer us not be going in one direction while the county's going in the other.
Exactly. Maybe, maybe it be land use as well as public safety, because it is both to me. It don't, I don't think it's isolated purely in land use.
The other thing that I think is important to realize, particularly with the date that you've selected is December the eighth, or the ninth, that is going to be a new council. That's going to be the night that the, that the new elected council people will be seated. So it's going to have, the complexion of the council is going to have at least two new faces on it.
But I suspect our candidates are going to be keeping themselves up to informed and questions answered, so I think they'll be ready.
But as far as the public is concerned, as far as public input being given or, given to us, it's very important that that date be well-known to them because that they're going to be talking to at least two new people that weren't part of the public process from this side of the dais on that night.
Okay, I'd like to move on now. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Item two is permits to construct water wells at two fifty-one Saddle Lane and four oh three Bryant Street. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Mr. Grant will be making this report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate getting that out of the way before this item came up. This is a continuation of a public hearing to receive public testimony relative to the two water well applications that were submitted back on August twenty-sixth, a couple of months ago, for two fifty-one Saddle Lane as well as three, or four oh three Bryant Street. At that time, the council continued the public hearing to a later date to receive further input from OBGMA, as just discussed, and other water agencies as well. OBGMA's consultant, as mentioned, presented their perspective on the groundwater situation at the meeting on October fourteenth, and essentially presented that their severe, that the severe drought conditions do exist, but are not an emergency at this time. And they had a lack of objection on permitting either one of these two water wells that are in discussion. The city municipal code relating to water wells states that its purpose is, A, to ensure a continued adequate supply of drinking water, and B, to prevent the contamination and pollution of the city's groundwater. The OBGMA has reviewed the applications and has no objections. In consultation with the city attorney, the council must take action based on evidence presented in the hearing with the following options available. Number one, to approve the applications based on lack of objection from OBGMA, other water agencies, and the public in general regarding the water supply. Or number two, to continue the matter further and request more input from OBGMA and other water agencies, et cetera. Or number three, to deny the applications outright based on new evidence about the water supply. Staff is recommending the first option as an option based on the moratorium just approved. It's a potential additional option would be to recommend a continuance to see if the forty-five day moratorium is lifted based on evidence used to support that moratorium. That's my staff report. Any questions?
Any questions from Mr. Grant, from council? Thank you. And this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, and we do have speaker cards. Steve Quilisi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Steve Quilisi, West Eucalyptus Street. I am not opposed to private wells in principle, and in fact, I prefer minimum regulation of most of our citizens and businesses. I am still confused, however, about what I heard from the OBGMA person, staff, or consultant, I'm not sure what it was, two weeks ago, talking about an inherent right to drill, and an inherent right to use a reasonable amount of water, whatever that means. It doesn't sound like any hard numbers. And again, the key is usage, not the number of holes poked in the ground here in the basin. And right now, there was some talk by Councilmember Clapp and others at the last meeting about safe yield, about how much water we should be taking out of the ground compared to what's being put back into the ground by whatever means. And I would contend that right now, the council does not know what safe yield is for the basin, and does not have a complete handle on how much water is actually being taken out of the basin. So whatever is added to that yield by these two gives us even less information about where we are in terms of safe yield. So I would, I would urge you to consider all of that and make sure that you have good data before you rule on this, on these two applications. Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards I have on item two.
You have one for me also.
Okay, I've lost it, but come on up.
Just a couple of simple points to kind of continue on with the, with the discussion of water, obviously. There seems to be some confusion about what the state's data is going to be in, on January, in January of this year. Councilman Laura, the, the state is going to produce data that, that tells us what the importance is according to state of the basins, not what kind of trouble it's in or not. It's just simply, how many people depend on it, and how important is that basin as far as the public is concerned throughout the state? That's what the data is that the, that the state's going to produce. There is a mention from Councilmember Clapp that there are still people, actually, a number of people mentioned about the, the people in the basin that do not report the water usage. There's about five thousand acre feet a year that get pumped out of the basin, and only ten or fifteen acre feet are the non-reported amounts. So it's, it's a very insignificant amount. There was some mention just a moment ago about needing to have good data. Drilling wells gives us good data. We're able to see where the basin is at, where the aquifers are at. We're able to monitor the, the water levels in those, those wells potentially. And it's a way to actually get more data about our basin, not less. And, and my last point is simply that we talked about the number of permits being given out in this county a number of times. Just some simple math says it's about point zero zero zero, zero eight percent of the population requested drilling permits this year. Just some simple math says it's about point zero, 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 zero eight percent of the population requested drilling permits this year in Ventura County out of, you know, eight hundred and fifty thousand people. So it's a very small number in comparison to the, to the amount of people in this county.
Madam Mayor, I have a real quick question for Mr. Hanson. I have a real quick question. You said that of the unmonitored wells, that's ten percent of the yield. How, if they're unmonitored, do you know it's ten percent?
No, I said it's about ten to fifteen acre feet of water that's not being reported. That's the estimated amount that's not being reported out of the five thousand acre feet.
Where do you get the, how do you get those estimates?
I got them from the OBGMA.
From the OBGMA. They're, that's what their estimates are off those wells. Okay, thanks.
That is all the speaker cards. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Mr. Haney?
I, um, I just have a couple of questions. The, the first one is, hi, again, Randy Haney with 513 Pleasant Avenue. To ensure a continued adequate supply of drinking water for the citizens, that's part of the city municipal code, so how do we make that determination? That'd be a question I'd like to know, like to have an answer to, maybe. And then the other thing is that, on these submittals, it says that, um, an accurate plot and outline of the locations proposed groundwater use. And so I looked at the pictures of each of the lots, and alls it is, is it just shows an aerial of the, of the house and, and of the commercial property, but it doesn't necessarily lay out a landscape plan. So we don't know what they're watering. We don't know anything about that aspect of it. So in the future, I'd like to see maybe that we require within the, in all wells, first of all, something that really clearly points out or shows where the water's gonna be used, and for instance, does a site this small necessarily need two acre feet of, of water a year? So again, if they had a landscape plan, or if they had something that was more definitive, we would know actually how much water they would need. And maybe we could limit it from, what is it, two acre feet? To one acre feet, to a half acre feet. But I'm just, you know what I'm saying? It is, we need to attach the usage to what it's being used for. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I agree, and that's one of the advantages of having a moratorium for the next forty-five days, so we can get the answers to some of these questions. But the item we're working on right now is the, is the issuing permits to construct the two water wells. Anyone else in the public wish to comment on the two applications? Then I'll close the...
Great comment.
Give us your name, please.
Brennan K. I'm on San Ramon. Twenty sixteen is our next sunspot year. There's an inverse proportion between solar radiation and precipitation. So the next few years, we're gonna have increased rainfall and cloud cover. Wait off, I mean, if you guys are looking to hold for forty-five days, it's gonna hit. I mean, it's not, yeah. It's, again, uh, when solar radiation picks up by twenty sixteen in a standard eleven-year cycle, uh, the earth compensates by precipitation and rainfall, cloud cover and such, so just bear with it. That's all I know.
Thank you. That's encouraging. Okay, and, um, any other comments from anyone in the audience? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council, and I'd, I'd like to make a comment. The recommendations show approving both of these applications in one motion. Is that what, I would rather see the applications approved separately. I'd, I'd rather see them approved with their own motion. That makes sense.
Uh, Madam Mayor, if I could comment on this, please. I was one of them that asked that this be continued so that we could have a presentation by the Groundwater Management Agency. And my, uh, my whole thought process on this is that I really don't have my mind made up until I hear all of the evidence that's gonna be put before us. And I am not swayed by the evidence that these two wells shouldn't be drilled. The Groundwater Management Agency came in and, I thought, gave a decent presentation, explained to us, even though I think it's lacking in the fact that they, that I don't have a lot of faith in their, their procedure in determining how much water's coming out of the, out of the basin. I haven't heard anybody get up and talk negatively about these two wells, other than the fact we're in a drought. But I have to rely on an agency that we've given responsibility to for, for monitoring this, particularly when it comes to these two wells, which have been requested permits for quite some time. So I don't see any reason that has been presented to me that would allow me to vote no on these two applications.
Any other comments, questions? Anyone ready to make a motion? Okay, I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, yeah. First of all, I, uh, I guess we have to accept the determination that environmental study is not required, consistent with exceptions noted in California Environmental Quality Act, section fifteen, three oh three. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. Okay, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd recommend, if you'll make separate motions, which is totally fine, we'll just assume that that finding is applied to each of your motions.
Okay, then I will move to approve the water well applications for Peter Romming at 251 Saddle Lane. And is that all I need to do? It looks like it is. Oh, and, and based on the lack of objection from OBGMA, water agencies, the public regarding the water supply, and relying on OBGMA in the county permit process to protect the water supply from contamination and assure suitability for use.
Second.
Rule call? Blapp?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Strobel?
Yes.
Hey, I'll make another motion then, that, uh, we approve the water well application for BH Holding LLC at 403 Bryant Street, based on a lack of objection from OBGMA, water agencies, and the public regarding the water supply and relying on OBGMA in the county permit process to protect the water supply from contamination and to assure suitability for use.
Second.
Rule call? Blapp?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Strobel?
Yes.
Okay, item three. Code enforcement staffing. It's a discussion item. Mr. Clark?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. At the September twenty-third meeting, the city council requested a discussion of code enforcement staffing options in order to be able to provide proactive enforcement of the leaf blower ordinance and other city ordinances. So in this report, first of all, we indicate that in recent years, code enforcement's really been an ancillary duty of the building staff, and there hasn't been any one individual that's focused just on code enforcement. And so we've primarily relied on complaint-based code enforcement, with very little actually proactive going out in the field and looking for code violations. So we've presented a couple of different options here. One is a part-time contractual position at thirty hours per week, which would cost about fifty-two thousand dollars. And this would be to have, through our contract services agreement, to retain a code enforcement officer that would be assigned primarily out in the field, and would be out looking for code violations, and also following up on reported code violations. The second option is to have an in-house position, which would be a full-time position at forty hours. The cost of that is slightly more. The first one was fifty-two thousand dollars. This one's eighty-eight thousand dollars. Having more time, of course, would provide more ability to do a more intensive code enforcement effort than a part-time staff. In, part of the, the difficulty of addressing this is trying to figure out how to pay for it. Because as you know, we adopted a balanced budget, and the expenditures in the general fund are equal to the revenues in the general fund, so where do we come up with money to pay for this? And there's a, a number of different answers. One is that the fee schedule that is still in place does not really cover the full cost of the building activity. And so in our budget, we're actually subsidizing the building activity, whereas under normal circumstances, general fund money would not go into building permit and building inspection activity. So if we were to adopt the proposed new building fees, which are slightly less than those that are in the county unincorporated area, we'll have more money available for code enforcement, because we won't have to be using it to subsidize building. Secondly, our level of activity is increasing. And so more, therefore, more of our staff time will be dedicated to current applications and current building activities, and less will be dedicated to general fund activities, and that should also free up some general fund money. So we believe, based on conservative assumptions, that we should have enough money to cover either one of these two options. We can't guarantee it, but if the trends continue as they have, and in fact, you do approve the fees at a subsequent meeting, we should be in good shape to do it. So the question is, why would we recommend hiring, going the contract route rather than going the full-time employee route? And you could go either. My concern is that, uh, we've been, we've been in a rising tide for the last few years. The amount of revenue that we collect has grown fairly rapidly, and we've tried to keep our staffing very lean and dedicate most of the growth to paving the roads and doing deferred maintenance and things that we've neglected for a long time. I'm concerned about adding new permanent staff, which is very expensive, and our ability to adjust staffing levels if we don't see the same growth in future years. The other concern I have is that there are some things coming our way that we've sort of characterized as potential clouds in the sky financially. And those have to do with pension costs, which will go up. Even though we've reduced pensions for new employees, the pension cost for the existing employees is projected to go up because of changes in the way PERS funds pensions. Secondly, um, we have an unfunded liability for retiree sick leave, or retiring medical coverage, I'm sorry. And again, we've changed the program. New employees are not gonna get that benefit. But the number of employees that are on retirement insurance is gonna grow as the current group of people that we have employed retire over time. So it's gonna go up, and then it's gonna go down. So I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that I'm projecting a deficit in future years. I'm just saying there's a bit of uncertainty, and therefore, I felt uncomfortable recommending hiring a new permanent position and felt more comfortable going with the contract basis, which is much more easy to adjust up or down in terms of the number of hours that we have. So that's sort of a synopsis of what we have here, and I'd be glad to respond to any questions you might have.
Any questions from council members of staff, Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Yeah, I have a quick question too.
I have a question. Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Thank you. The other day, I was walking around my neighborhood, and there they were, uh, gardeners using gasoline leaf blowers in residential zones. What do I do? I mean, by the time, if I call, if we don't have a full-time code enforcer, it seems to me by the time he would be there, the gardener will have left.
So that's a very good question, and, and I think you're right, and I think that's been our experience. People, first of all, people tend to call the police, not code enforcement, but either way, unless we actually catch someone in the act of using a banned, um, piece of equipment, there's not much we can do. So we, we did talk to the enforcement staff in Santa Monica, and they, they actually have staff that...
They have a no leaf blower period.
True. But their, but their technique is to actually be on patrol. So they, so they dedicate a couple of days a week, and they're a pretty good-sized city, and they just go out and patrol and look for people who are violating their ordinance, which you're right, it's more straightforward.
Very straightforward, no leaf blower.
True. But, but I think in this case, we would be directing them to, to look for that activity. So it doesn't take that long to drive all the streets in Ojai, and if we do it at random times on different days, including weekends, I think we, we're not gonna catch everybody. It's like police officers catching speeders. We will catch some, and the word will get out. So I think we'll be in better shape if we do one of these two options than we are now.
So you're saying, let's see, we go with the thirty-hour option? So I, I, I find a gentleman using a gas leaf blower in a residential zone. I call, will there be a number that people will know about to call to get our, a code enforcer over there right away? I mean, I just don't want our police department going out enforcing leaf blowers. We have two officers on duty, you know?
So, so you can call, and if the person is on duty, because the person could be working evening hours, could be working Saturday or Sunday hours. They're not gonna be working regular business hours, but if the person is available, they would go out. But that's not what we're relying on. We're relying on them going out on patrol and actually finding violators themselves. So, so they drive through Teramina, and they observe someone operating a gas leaf blower.
It's a valley, Rio, but go ahead.
Well...
Near, near.
We'll just, we'll just say, as an example. So, so patrol is something we don't have now, but something that we could have under either of these two options. And, and I think, based on, you know, looking at the size of Santa Monica and the size of some of the other cities we looked at, and the amount of staffing they dedicate to these things, that thirty hours is probably sufficient.
Could we also have, like, a door knocker, you know, things you put on door knobs and stuff, saying, "In this neighborhood, it's only allowed to use an electric blower." If you're a gardener, or if, if, you don't know, "Could you please let your gardeners know they must use electric blowers," or something. With, I think the public really don't know what the rules are, and
Yeah.
who are home when their gardeners come. But I really think they really don't know, and they have no clue if their gardeners are using gas or, or electric. And it might be helpful to have some kind of public education, and if someone is going around the neighborhoods, they could perhaps give them a little flyer. It'd be cheaper than sending out mail.
Good suggestion.
So that would be my suggestion, too.
I have a question, and I can already feel myself grinning, because I don't even know how to present this properly. And we have so many cell phones with video capabilities. How many rights, citizens' rights, would we be violating if we picked up our phone, videotaped the gla, the gas blowers in use, and then sent that video to the city for code enforcement?
Oh, that's interesting.
Well, hopefully, they're not doing it from their vehicle.
No, but they have that truck there.
Oh.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm not sure we'd cite on that, but that obviously would give a patrol approach a place to go, time and day, the name of a company that we could, that would allow the inspectors to, uh, go out and, and investigate. It would, it's like a tipster, a tip, tip line.
Okay, so that is something that, excuse me, that our citizens might, um...
Yes, it's, uh, yeah, there's no reasonable expectation of privacy in using your leaf blower in the middle of the afternoon, but, yeah. I, I don't have any experience, honestly, with, with video tipping, tipsting.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Picture's worth a thousand words, so, and besides that, if someone sees me holding my phone up and they're using a gas leaf blower, we're just picking on the blowers. That might give them pause.
Yes.
That was, if, any other?
Yeah, I just have a, I just have a couple of comments. And leaf blowers are not necessarily on the top of, of my enforcement list, but blighted buildings are. And I just want to be assured that whatever kind of code enforcement officer that we're gonna be hiring is going to be concentrating on, on the code as it currently is constituted regarding the, uh, the health and safety issues regarding blighted buildings. I think that there's more and more buildings that have become vacant, and I don't think we're enforcing that code at all. The other thing that I would like to make sure that we do is, is check to see if things are being done, particularly construction, without permits, and work on weekends, things like that. But there's certain things that are static, like the blighted building... But there's certain things that are static, like the blighted building ordinance, that it would only take someone a few trips around town to, to identify these buildings and to see what's being violated. And, you know, you take a look at the building, something was started at the old Mandalay Building, and now it's stopped, and we've got a piece of heavy equipment sitting in the front there. Well, I don't know why there's a piece of heavy equipment sitting there doing nothing. I mean, why is it there, and why is it permitted to be there? And why did all of a sudden the work start, and then it stopped? Those kinds of things are what, what are important to me.
Madam Mayor.
And, and just one other comment. Do you think that can be accomplished with the contractor for 30 hours a week?
I do think so, yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Plats.
Ever the fiscal hawk, a part-time code enforcement officer for 20 hours a week, $52,000 a year, that's 112,000 if it was a full-time position. Wow. Can I have that job?
No, it says 88.
No, it says right here, "Part-time contract position, 52K for 20 hours a week." I want, can I apply? That is really a good gig. Hey, everybody, 52K to work 20 hours a week. Really?
So, so, when, through the contract, we are paying for oversight and supervision?
Yeah.
So, the code enforcement officer isn't getting all of that. And we also compared the rates that we were being quoted by our contractor with the rates being charged in other cities for code enforcement officers, and this was actually at the lower end of the range.
Well, over here, the City of Ventura's 49 to 68. $23.56 an hour. Code enforcement, I mean, my word.
So, so-
$22,000 for 20 hours a week?
No, that's, the, the job descriptions from the City of Ventura and the county-
Yeah.
Are full-time jobs, and our salary would be comparable to those, but in addition to salary, we have to pay for benefits, and that's what pushes the cost up to 88,000.
In part-time? You don't have to pay benefits for that?
No. The full-time, the full-time position is 88,000 dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's an in-house position that includes salary and benefits.
Mm-hmm.
The-
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay. The part-time position, 30 hours, is 52,000 dollars, and that includes oversight and supervision. So, part of it is, it's not all going to the contract deploy.
It's overhead allocation. So, it's not even really dollars, it's just apportionment.
True. So, we-
So, you're not paying the part-time code enforcement officer $54 an hour?
Right. So, so when we, when we contract for building inspection, plan check, code enforcement, we pay at a per-hour rate that includes overhead. And the per-hour rates that we're paying under our current contract compare very favorably to the per-hour rates that other cities are getting for the same services.
So, contract planners also provide code enforcement office, code enforcement?
Usually, it's, there's, there are, there are companies that are primarily in the building side of the house, and other contractors that are primarily in the planning side.
Right.
So, we contract right now for the plan check and-
The building side.
Building inspection, the building side. This would be part of that contract.
Okay, here's an idea. Why, why can't we advertise this position and come up with a wage that we feel is more reasonable, in my estimation, and just hire somebody?
That's exactly what option two is. Option, you could do that.
We could hire an ex-serviceman, or somebody, an ex-law enforcement person-
Absolutely.
Or somebody like that.
That's option two.
That, that, to me, that would, no, option two was 88,000, a full-time position. We could advertise for a 30, or 20, or 25-hour a week position for a wage that is a little more, I mean, that's a lot of money to drive around and see if somebody's got weeds in their yard.
But we would still have to provide supervision to that individual.
Right.
And so, there, so we would be either paying an in-house person or our contract building department people to supervise the code enforcement officers, so that, I think at the end of the day, you kind of get to a similar price.
Could you say he would have to spend more time supervising this person, so therefore, he'd be billing more hours?
So, let me, let me explain a little bit about code enforcement. Part of, part of the code enforcement duty is just going out in the field and observing-
Then it's the paperwork.
Issues, yeah. But there's also times when the code enforcement staff sits down with the city attorney and talks about the cases and how to manage them.
Uh-huh.
And so, and that's the supervision piece. And so, there, you know, that, part of that's with the city attorney, but part of that's also with the building department staff.
I guess I just don't see why it's a $52,000 for 20 hours a week position. That's a lot of money.
It says 20.
It says 20. $52,000 for 20 hours a week.
Do you mean 30?
So, I, it's, the, the 52,000 covers 30 hours per week, 20 of those hours are in the field, and 10 are in the office doing the paperwork.
Okay. Okay, that makes it a little better. I think I'm going to apply for this job.
You can apply, you can get it. There's a job out in San Bernardino County, desert parks, doing code enforcement.
Yeah? What do they charge? What do they pay the person?
They charge a lot, the fatality rate of these properties.
Check out math labs.
Any other questions, comments from council members?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have a couple of comments, and I, I agree that, I think that it's important to have a code enforced officer if we want to keep the ordinance that we have. I think it's permanent, it's permanent for the city to do. And, but I, I would want, I would hope that if we get a code officer, he would really enforce what is on our municipal code, but varying from, I don't care if it's leaf blowers to hedges, to fences, to construction, to, I, I feel like we need to not discriminate and, and do it across the board. But I would, I would like to also ease into this and really educate the public, because I agree with Mayor Protem Smith, that a lot of residents don't really know the law that's in our books. So, education is going to be vital, in my opinion, if we're really going to take this serious. I don't think that we should just select a few ordinances here and there. I think that if it's anything, it should be safety and health first. Those ordinance go to top of our, our list, and then trickles down, and we should really concentrate in educating our, 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 our public. And, but I am in, in favor of, of getting a code officer, you know?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Smith.
I enjoyed the article about code enforcement in San Luis Obispo. They actually had two categories. They had a code enforcer, and then they sort of had a neighborhood wellness guy, and he would go around and basically check and let somebody know who's been working on their auto that's parked in the front yard for six months, that, you know, it's not really cool to use the front yard as an auto shop. And I think you need, in looking to hire a person, you do need somebody who would have rapport with people, and to basically educate them as they go on. But I think that having the campaign where you put on doorknob knockers or something like, like Bill's doing in his campaign, you know, Vote for Bill, might be helpful to let people know, hey, we're going to be serious about code enforcement. You're going to meet, we do need a 30-hour-a-week person at least, and he needs to be a community resource to educate them. But we do need to back, I agree, anything he sees, if he goes around the neighborhood and he sees the front yard repair shop and the, the RVs that are parked outside or whatever, he needs to stop and give them a note about it, you know, to get that going. And we will have people coming in who will say, as I once heard from someone who's, the code enforcer, put a note on their door that they can't keep their RV in the front, like they said, that we are basically ruining her children's lives. So, people do take it seriously when you basically try to say, "This is a code violation." I mean, ridiculously seriously, literally, this lady was in tears that we're ruining her children's lives, because her RV was parked where it shouldn't be. I mean, so, it's a very touchy area, but you know what we have now? It's not working. And this has been an ongoing issue for years, not just the leaf blowers, but complaint-based and putting neighbors against neighbors and all is not really working well. So, I am more than willing to spend the money to move our system more to what they call in the San Luis Obispo, pre, proactive, proactive code enforcement, rather than just complaint-based.
I have a brief comment, maybe. I have never supported complaint-driven code enforcement. I do not feel that it's equal. I believe our laws should be enforced across the board. Until the city gets serious about enforcing its laws, the citizens are not going to comply with them, because they, the only reason that they would comply is because someone complained. That's, that, to me, makes a mockery of having a municipal code. We either, if, if we have the, if we have the desire to establish laws for the health, safety, et cetera, we should also have the desire to enforce those laws. And that's-
Proactive.
And, and I can think of, of many wonderful plans, like some of the ones based in, but I think first, the concept that if we are going to enforce our laws, until we enforce our laws, the citizens have no incentive to comply with our laws. So, I think we have to get serious first. Any other comments?
Proactive.
Okay, I have a couple of speaker cards. Steve Collessi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members. I, I can only agree with what the mayor has said. Either we enforce the code that's on the books, or we should take off the books, those portions of the code that we don't intend to enforce, first of all. Also, I'm, I'm a little confused right now about all these numbers. There was a, there was a administrative report from staff dated March 4th that talked about half-time code enforcement person costing 47,000. Now, we're seeing a full-time 49 to 68. Maybe it's adding overhead to that that makes it 88, but I don't see how we get to 52 from the numbers that are presented here. So, I'd like a little more clarification on that, and understand, once we have all the good data in hand, what exactly the council wants to do about code enforcement. But I would agree, we either enforce the code, or we abandon it piece by piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Wireick.
William Wireick, 607 Blanche. I won't repeat a lot of what's already been discussed and points I want to make. I want to make one point, however. The object here is compliance. Enforcement is a tool towards compliance. And as I've been serenaded with hearing gas blowers that I'm increasingly sensitized to because of, I've sat through, you know, all the discussion about it since the last discussion, I've been thinking about this, what's the best way to get the compliance? And I think that the, the one thing I would, I would take a little bit of small issue with in terms of this proposal, is that voluntary compliance is always more effective than giving citations, giving tickets, patrolling. That's sort of, I think, what you do to make sure that your compliance, your voluntary compliance is working. And my very small example I want to give is the leaf blowers. How much easier would it be, for example, if we had a rule saying, if you're going to be charging money for doing landscaping services in the City of Ojai, you're going to have a sign on your truck with a phone number, and you're going to pay, make sure that we have a business license with, doesn't have a nominal fee, that, that for sure, that there's contact information, so that neighbors, for example, could say, oh, I'm going to call that number, because they were using a gas blower, and I know the gas blower is not allowed, and you know what? That owner of that company might say, you know, I get enough of those calls. It doesn't even have to go to the city. It doesn't have to go to the enforcement. In other words, I would like to see this position be thought of as more of a compliance officer, and think of compliance programs, rather than just enforcement and citations.
Code compliance officer.
Exactly. And so, I just sort of, hearing all of your comments and my thinking about it, I think there's things we could do, for example, business licenses on landscaping trucks with signs on the, being required, that would promote compliance without necessarily, you know, being just citation-based or citation-focused. And so, that's my only comment, that I, I hope we think of compliance programs rather than just enforcement. Thank you.
I like the idea of a compliance officer, it's gentler. I also like the idea of signs on those trucks, so when you're videoing. That's all of the speaker cards I have on this item. Anyone else in the public wish to make a comment? Okay. Mr. Haney.
So, we can go home, huh? Hopefully. Real civil, the state of California requires, if you have a C-27, or if you have a contractor's license, that you have your truck signed, and you have that license posted. And if you're handing out business cards, you have to have your license on it also. So, that is a state requirement. It'd be great if we had city requirements that met those same things. That was, that was the, the most important thing, is, is we do have that on, as a law. The, the other thing, too, is in code enforcement is also, is, is not to be heavy-handed, but again, to be an educator, and to have that person out there interacting with our public. And, and, you know, instead of writing the ticket, presenting a warning, and keeping track of that, I would prefer something like that. And then also, Betsy, getting back to the dollar amount, you know what? I was reading the, the job description. You know, you need to know building codes. There, you know, when you really look at the job description, $23 an hour, you might even up at the 28. That's just my take on it. You know, an entry-level position in our, in our industry is 12 to 18. So, someone that has to understand law, know law, have a, a good interactive skills with public, has to be able to interact with police officers and city dignitaries, I mean, there's, there's a lot to it, so.
It would also help for bilingual, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, it's a really good point.
Absolutely.
Because I was looking further into this after, after I spoke of the, the job description, and there is, there's a lot involved. Very true.
I think bilingual is definite.
Yeah.
Plus.
And, you know, somebody that's familiar with the community would be good, too. I know you can't discriminate requiring somebody to live in the city, but I think having a preference for somebody that knows our community may be a good idea. That could, that could be very helpful. Or it could be a drawback, because we all know what happens with that, so maybe that isn't such a good idea. Maybe take that back.
Get that, man, just hold it. Somebody who lives way far.
Okay, I think I checked to see if anyone else in the audience wished to speak, and there was no one. Is that correct? Okay, back to council.
Yeah. Is somebody ready?
I'm ready. I would like to add a part-time, that we make a motion to add a part-time contract code enforcement position to the Community Development Department budget to, for 30 hours a week, and to re-adjust that in another six months to a year, as we see if the needs are being met.
Excellent.
Second.
Roll call.
Plats.
Yes.
Plats? Yes. Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strawble?
Yes. And I, I wanted to comment, my inclination was to go ahead and go straight for the heavy hitter. I'm just like that. But I like Mayor Protem Smith's idea of evaluating in six months to see if, if that meets our needs. Okay, give me just a moment, I'm trying to figure out where we are here. I think we've covered everything. All right, so we're going to recess as the Ojai City Council, and convene as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency.
Madam Mayor, motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Plats. Plats, Clap, Laura.
Whatever your names are. Whatever your names are.
Smith, Strobel.
I like that.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we're going to adjourn as the Redevelopment Successor Agency reconvene as the city council. Reports from councilmembers? Reports from city manager? I'm moving right along here.
I just wanted to give accolades to Amber Young, who served as the Ojai Day Coordinator. That, that event in two years has gone from a huge financial burden to very close to break even, including covering some of the cost of her salary. And I think the attendance this time was remarkable, so...
Can I ask you to get her a dozen roses and thank, and thank her?
Absolutely, I'll do that.
From the city council, that we so appreciate of her hard work.
Mr. Clark, I also want to thank Mr. McClary, in your absence as acting city manager. He did an outstanding job at the, at the peace poll presentation, as well as was very responsive to any questions I had in your absence. So I want to pass along my thanks.
I second that. He was, he was great.
Madam Clerk?
I just want to announce that we have a blue ballot box in the lobby for those one more week from today, so bring your ballots in.
Okay, so the ballot box will be here at City Hall and available until...
Tuesday, November 4th, 5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m.
Okay. I would like to say one other thing to, if there's any ladies out in our audience who are listening, some of you may not know it, but the women were not allowed to vote until 1923. So for women who are young, they have families, they are working two jobs, they don't see how it accounts for them, but women actually were force-fed in jails, and they went on hunger strikes for the right to vote. So it's so disrespectful for women to not get to the ballot box. When I'm retiring from office, Carlin Strobel is retiring from office, we will have one lady on the council, Betsy Clapp, who may or may not retire in two years. The current candidates are all men. I know they don't pay attention to this, but I do. So I encourage any woman out there who is interested in political service to serve. Only 30% are, of politicians are women. But you know what? If women run, women get elected. So do vote. Thank you.
And I have one comment to add to that, and that is, we have such a gift with this thing called democracy. We have had so many lives lost, we've had so many men and women who have served our country for so long to ensure that we have the right to vote. That puts responsibility on us to vote, so do so.
Thank you.
And we're going to have the compliance police.
And get your flu shot.
And get your flu shot.
Oh, yes, your flu shot, that's right. I haven't gotten one.
Any other comments? Mr. Grant? No? Okay. Did I, am I not seeing anyone else? Meeting adjourned.